Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Leah, roll call please.
Mayor Holzclaw?
Here.
Mayor Portem Vignell?
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari?
Here.
Councilmember Steckler? Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Dukey?
Here.
Councilmember Paddock?
Present.
I forgot that Councilmember Steckler informed us that he would not be here this evening, so can we have a motion to excuse, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Okay, that brings us to audience communication. I've got five people on the signup sheet that are in the audience, so I'm gonna go in the order that they're listed and try to keep your comments if you can to three minutes. It's our general rule. And first on the list is Jake Amadon. Is that the way you pronounce it?
Good evening. So, I'm coming here to talk about my neighbor. I don't know if you guys can hear. Sorry, the official mic drone.
You usually do that at the end.
Sorry. There's gonna be a lot to talk about, but I'm gonna try to keep it short. So, one three seven oh one thirty to drive southeast in Mill Creek. A lot of the officers are aware of this property. But there's, besides all the code violations, we've been dealing with the septic tank failure since at least two thousand and nineteen. There was a renter there named Kyle, and he reached out to me about who to talk to about getting his septic tank pumped because the landlord wouldn't take care of it. So what happened was it was backing up into his tub, into his bathroom, while the homeowner was away in jail anyways. So he had it pumped, and then the septic company that looked at it deemed that the mound system in the back had failed. So during this, they broke the lid on top. So now instead of coming out inside the house, it's coming out into the backyard, onto the mound system, which is directly next to my house. I can see it from my deck. We can smell it all summer long with the windows open. And I've been in contact with the county, and I have, this is a whole list of all the comments from the county being out there with Zach, I forget his last name, Chris Christopherson or something. So he's been in contact with them, and this was starting on March of two thousand and twenty-three, and it goes all the way up until recently, but back in, let's see, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, is when this Snohomish County letter was dated. Let's see, it's, so it's to Wyatt on May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. They deemed his system failed, and essentially it's in code violation of the rules and regulations state board, blah, blah, blah. The first thing he could do is repair or replace the onsite sewage disposal system in accordance with the WAC and repair failures. The second option is to connect to the public sewer, which is not available. Third option is to abandon the property. So this has been four hundred and I believe sixty-nine, seventy days since he had thirty days to get out of there, and nothing's been done, and there's so now he and another gentleman are living there, and now they're urinating outside daily. So I don't know where my wife went. I think she stepped out. I have a one-year-old, a wife, I have a bunch of neighbors with children, and this guy's out in his front yard urinating. Down the side of his house, on my side of the house, I have videos of it, I have pictures of him, and I've reported it to the county numerous times. I just keep getting, he was willing to work with us, he was being nice, and we thought he was gonna work with us. The back of this letter, this is all the notes from the Department of Ecology, and it said at the bottom here that Mr. Godiava was extremely confrontational and aggressive. I had to abruptly end the conversation as he was yelling into the phone. And then, let's see. Due to exhibited aggressive behavior by the property owner, two EHS must be present at all site visits moving forward. And that was in December of two thousand and twenty-three. So that doesn't sound very willing to work with the county on getting it fixed. So I'm just here with a bunch of neighbors we're gonna speak to on different things, but I'm mainly talking about this, and I would just like to get this in front of more people's eyes. I've sent out a lot of emails, and I haven't got a lot of response, so I'm here, and I'll probably be here at the next one as well, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list is Laura Wellington.
Good evening, Mill Creek City Council members. My name is Laura Wellington. I moved to Mill Creek six years ago when I was hired as the principal of Heatherwood Middle School. I mention my profession because I don't just work in the city, I live here, side by side with the families and students I serve. In fact, several of my current students live within just a house or two of the property I'm here to address tonight, located at thirteen seven oh one Thirtieth Street Southeast. Their safety, the safety of the neighborhood families, and the welfare of the dogs that reside at this home are at serious risk. We believe the dogs on this property are not being raised as pets. They appear to be used for illegal dog fighting or as bait dogs. The constant barking, crying, and unmistakable sounds of distress, especially when the owner is present, are horrifying and disturbing, to say the least. I've personally called the police three times in less than a two-week period to complain about the dogs crying in distress. Other neighbors have called multiple times reporting dogs fighting, sounds of animals being physically tortured, and violent altercations between the actual residents. One neighbor even reported a strong unmistakable odor of a decomposing large animal coming from that backyard. Officers informed us the dogs are being kept in cages in the back shed with no consistent access to exercise, water, or food. This neighbor is in clear violation of Mill Creek Municipal Code for excessive barking and has potentially violated the RCW related to dog fighting and animal cruelty. I've spoken directly with Officer Kleiner, Officer Gummau, and Animal Assistant Larissa Piggott of the Mill Creek Police Department. I've documented everything I can, including audio recordings of the dogs crying in distress. I've passed the audio recordings on to Officer Kleiner and Larissa Piggott per their request. This property is a threat not just to animals, but to the public safety. The ongoing violence, disturbing domestic disputes, and illegal activity cannot be ignored. Officers routinely dispatch multiple units, I think, for their own safety. I fear for my safety, the safety of our neighbors, the children living by that I serve, and the welfare of these dogs. We are asking for immediate and decisive action, deeper investigation, unannounced inspections, involvement from animal cruelty units, and enforcement of both animal welfare and public safety laws. Thank you for your time, and please treat this situation with urgency. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Amanda Ladd?
Hello. My name is Amanda Ladd, and I've been a homeowner and active member of the community since two thousand and twelve. My children have grown up in Mill Creek, and currently my son is at Heatherwood Middle School, and my daughter is a senior at Jackson High School. Feel free to run my name and date of birth to see the type of citizen that I am. I do not have a criminal record, and the only thing you might find is a speeding ticket. I worked very hard to get out of a personal abusive relationship, and it was something that I had to really fight for. I did not feel safe in my home, and with the help of the Mill Creek Police Department, my attorney in Snohomish County Courts, I was able to put a protective order in place. And for the safety of my children, I am so thankful that that happened. I fought hard to keep my children safe, to currently feel unsafe in my own neighborhood. My task for tonight is to speak on behalf of myself and my neighbors regarding the multiple code violations being broken as a property app for the property owner in question. Title six, which is animal controls and abuse of dogs, title eight, which is containers required, there's never been a trash collection at this home. Garbage is piling up in the front lawn, and I've never seen trash service there, and we believe that it's being illegally dumped somewhere. Public nuisance and disorderly conduct. There's constant fighting between the owner and tenants, which deserves a piece. Interfering with the reporting of domestic violence, there's been threats to his roommates to keep them quiet. Criminal trespass and defrauding public utility, the owner and tenants, and the owner and his tenants enter nearby properties, my neighbor, and have stolen power. They've also stolen water. And they have threatened some of the tenants living there to write over their disability checks and social security checks. So there is fraud to vulnerable adults. Also, we have been made aware that they've been reaching out to charities to get utilities paid for, so that they have, you know, their water turned on when other people, I'm sure, need it more than him. There's also indecent exposure, which is urinating in public. I have two children, my neighbor next door has a few children, so this is very disturbing. There's also several entitled ten abandoned, unauthorized, and junk vehicles. And as Jake mentioned, the discharge, title fifteen, which is the discharge into the Mill Creek waters and storm drainage, the sewage is going directly into our waters of Mill Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Porter?
I live down the street from, there are about four houses down from Wyatt. I've lived there for twenty-seven years. There's multiple stories I could come up here and tell you about Wyatt. The one that really sticks with me is, it was last winter, and I looked outside, and there was an elderly gentleman who was walking around in his pajamas and socks, and that was it, and it was freezing cold. And so I went out there, and I tried to talk to him, and he was, he was acting very confused. I asked him, you know, where did he come from? He pointed at Wyatt's house, and I asked him, you know, how did you get out here? He said he woke up in the garage and that he had not eaten for two days. So at that point, my wife and myself, we brought him inside, and he absolutely just inhaled every bit of food that we put in front of him. It was obvious that he had not been eating or being taken care of. This is one of the gentlemen that Wyatt has been, was taking his social security checks from in exchange for a place to stay and room and board, but obviously not providing anything for him. He was also beaten up. He had multiple bruises, cuts, everything all over his face. The police department came out, they asked him what happened to him. He said, he didn't really want to answer. He finally said, I fell down. They said, this doesn't look like you fell down. And he finally came up to the point of saying, well, sometimes you think you know somebody, but you really don't. And that's as close as he could come to actually saying what happened to him. And I think we all really do know what truly happened to him. And it's disturbing. I mean, I could go up here, and I only have three minutes. I could be three hours up here with story after story after story, after living near this gentleman for this amount of time, and it's very frustrating. Like I said, we've been there for twenty-seven years. I plan on retiring there, living the rest of my life there. Lived here for a very long time, and this has just become extremely frustrating because I've also put in emails to the city and different code enforcements, and I just get back generic emails and then nothing. And I've even written back and said, is there a follow-up to this? And I don't get a follow-up to that email. So it feels like we're getting ignored. I think, you know, just to be point blank, I think if this gentleman lived next to any of you guys up here, I don't think he would probably still be living there, and I think we're getting ignored.
Thank you for your comments. And last on the list is Lisa Porter, or is that, is it Lisa?
So I'm Doug's wife. Good evening, council members. I'm a teacher at Mariner High School, so I just want to share from that perspective. So last winter, a resident of Wyatt's house, Barbara, contacted me to help her get out of the house quickly as he was abusive and wanted her to give over her welfare check to him. She was scared, elderly, and low income without family around. Wyatt preys on people like this. He doesn't want to work, manipulates people to pay for his living expenses. I helped Barbara leave the house when Wyatt left in the morning with the supervision of Mill Creek officers standing by. I helped her get settled and extended stay until she could get into a shelter. There was also, there has also been a vulnerable younger woman that seemed to be trapped in the cycle of prostitution that was staying at this house. I contacted the same officer. I'm standing in the gap for women that are vulnerable. I need your help. On a different note, we have had numerous people tour the two houses for sale across the street from us. While I'm working in the yard, they have asked us what it's like to be, to live in Mill Creek. I would love to say it's a great place to live and raise your children with great schools. We've been here twenty-seven years. The police respond quickly, and crime is low. The city is managed efficiently and effectively. However, I also want to say that there is a slumlord that is allowed to coexist with us that oppresses the poor, takes advantage of the vulnerable, allowed sex offender to live next to children without registering, tortures pipples that could end up being a threat to children playing in the cul-de-sac. He's had a broken septic that insults the neighborhood when it's warm out, has a pigsty of a yard, and Mill Creek has allowed it or doesn't enforce the image they like to portray. They enforce it with its law-abiding citizens, but can't seem to take action with people like Wyatt. This is inequitable. Targeting law-abiding citizens and allowing situations like this to go unresolved, instead they sweep the fences under the carpet by passing the responsibility on to someone else, in which comes, becomes chaos and a failure to its abiding citizens and results in inequity. We have been living with an assault to our, all of our senses the last several years, and Mill Creek can't seem to fix it. Is that what you want me to say to the prospective residents? Is that what you want us to share with the news? Would you put up with this? Can't you help us by standing in the gap? We are suffering. What are you going to do? Because we've had enough. Washington State says protect your citizens, so protect us. Don't just protect those who are breaking the law, support citizens that are upholding the law. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to address this topic tonight? Anyone else like to address the council on anything tonight? Okay, back to this neighborhood issue. I think, for some reason, some of your messages are getting caught in our spam filter, and I'm not sure why. So we just found Amanda's email just before five o'clock and it circulated with those materials. So we haven't had a chance to discuss. I don't know if anyone's, anyone has had a chance to review them yet. I did have a chance to speak with Chief Wyatt, the city manager and the community, Mr. Ryan, to talk about some next steps. I've already reached out to Jared on the Health Department issue. I'm not sure where it's at and holdup is with the Health Department. I'm not sure if they've referred this to the PA's office, if that's where it's gone. Both Chief and I know Jason Cummings fairly well, so we can reach out to him to find out why the county hasn't been taking action on the Health Department. Our staff has responded to the code enforcement. They've been following the procedures. I know it's not, it can be frustrating because the process can sometimes turn into paralysis, but we have to follow the process for code enforcement. We're at that point under our code where now it's gonna be coming to us. So we need to get advised by our city attorney, who is, we have a substitute tonight. But I've asked the city manager and police chief to bring us a report and be prepared with, so we can discuss at our meeting in two weeks what our options are, because I don't know all of what they are. I know we have some code options under the code enforcement provisions. I don't know what authorities we have for public nuisances or things like that, so we need to get advised by our city attorney, which I've asked for him to be prepared to do two weeks from tonight. So I know that doesn't solve things tonight, but we heard you, and we will see what we can do to get this corrected. So. Is there any, John, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna be gone, so we excused you, so you can leave the meeting if you'd like. But you're welcome to stay too. I don't see any members of the public. Surely, I'm glad you're here, so Martin will be in touch with you tomorrow to talk about filling in for Grant in the next week.
Understood, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other members of the public want to address council? Okay, thank you for coming out tonight. My agenda. Too much stuff. Okay, that brings us to our presentations this evening. Item six B is a proclamation of the city for Hispanic Heritage Month, and this is a proclamation of the city of Mill Creek. Whereas each year, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, including Mexico, as well as those who came from Central America, South America, Spain, and the Caribbean. And whereas what began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson was expanded by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period, starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. And whereas the date September fifteenth is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Additionally, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. And whereas this year's theme, Collective Heritage: Honoring the Past, Inspiring the Future, highlights the importance of recognizing the rich history, diverse achievements, and ongoing contributions of Hispanic and Latinx communities, while also looking forward to their future impact and influence. And whereas we recognize and honor the many ways that Hispanics have enriched the fabric of our society, and we rededicate ourselves to address the lack of equal access to opportunity that many still face. The Hispanic population in the United States is now sixty-six point three five million as of two thousand and twenty-three, constituting approximately twenty percent of the total population. And whereas in Washington State, the Hispanic population represents a wide range of nationalities and backgrounds, all of whom make a positive contribution to educational, nonprofit, government, and business sectors, which reflect the remarkable diversity of the American people. And now therefore, I Brian Holzclaw, the mayor of the city of Mill Creek, on behalf of the city council, to hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Mill Creek. Signed this ninth day of September. Need a water. Okay, that brings us to item C, the Arts and Beautification Board Great Garden Awards that I will never win. Yeah.
I hope I can hear it as quiet. Am I getting a great garden award?
No.
Anybody see my yard, they know I'm not getting it.
Councilmember, staff, and the administration of the city, thank you for having us here. Thanks for all who have attended this evening. On behalf of the Art and Beautification Board, I'm the chairman of the board. My name is Peter Furtado, and I'm really excited to present this year's garden awards. So I'll give you a little background. Each year, the board tours gardens around the city and nominates properties that we think embody the spirit of beautifying our community. Our award process involves splitting up Mill Creek into seven distinct zones. Here we go.
There we go.
Look at that. Thank you so much.
Yes, there we go.
All right. The award process involves splitting up Mill Creek into seven distinct zones. As you can see on the map behind me, each board member was given a zone to tour in which they selected their nominees. We then came together during our July meeting to share our selections and photos with the rest of the board. Among these nominations, twelve gardens were selected, one per zone, and then five additional at-large awards. Yard signs and award letters were presented to each winner, and a letter was mailed to each address. Eight of our twelve recipients responded, some of which are here tonight. Thank you. Slide three. There we go. This is really our criteria in selecting these properties and what catches our attention. So the Great Gardens exhibit impressive design, creativity, diversity, and beauty. All great gardens demonstrate both time and love of homeowners dedicated to caring for their gardens and beautifying our community. The Great Garden Award recipients will exchange their temporary yard signs, which we had placed in the yards, for their actual plaque. This plaque is actually engraved acrylic. Yes, slightly modified this year. Thanks to Caitlin. Thank you. Excellent. And now we have our award recipients. I believe there's one online and two present here tonight. Our first award is being presented to Gary and Jenna Parsons. Gary, you're here tonight? All right, would you come forward and receive your award? This garden was selected for its well-maintained lawn and carefully curated garden of diverse plants and trees, as well as perennials. When asked about the inspiration for the garden, Gary, Mr. Parsons responded, "My wife is responsible for the garden. You could see at our house." Jenna knew exactly what and where to plant. She pointed, and I dug the hole. That's what teamwork is. Great. That's the way to do it. I like it. I like it. Okay. Larry? Lou? I believe you're here tonight. Great. Thank you for being here. Come on up to receive your award.
Yes, that's incredible.
This garden was selected for its beautiful mixture of red and pink flowers, tended to grass and decorative bushes. In response to the award selection, Mr. Lou wrote us, saying, "I've poured a lot of love and hard work into my garden, and it's incredibly gratifying to know that it contributes to the beauty of our community." Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Let's see, our next one. Bob and Judy Scott, they are not with us this evening. This garden was selected for its vibrant, lush, and variety of plants, cohesive arrangement, and attention to detail with neatly trimmed brushes and gravel pathways. It's a gorgeous, gorgeous property. Elaine Adams, I believe you're online. Elaine, can you hear us? Well, Elaine, thanks for joining us tonight. We will get this award to you, and we can exchange it for your yard sign, but we love seeing you and your husband here on the screen, and you have a beautiful yard. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
This garden was selected for its notably beautiful collars, neat lines, and well-kept lawn. Beautiful yard. Thanks, you guys. Julie Lundquist in the parks. Julie is not with us tonight. When asked about the inspiration for her garden, Ms. Lundquist responded, "When I designed the garden, my goal was to create the space that feels both peaceful and welcoming. The riverbed rocks add some flow, while the little bridge brings a touch of charm. I planted Japanese maples for their shape and color through seasons, and then filled in with ground cover, ferns, flowers, and et cetera to create a texture and contrast throughout the year. The lanterns and their flickering lights along the rock path, one of my favorite touches, they make the evening feel special, keeping the garden just as enjoyable after the sun goes down." Great intention here. Next, Michael and Ellen Castro, they are not with us here tonight, but thank you for beautifying our community. It's a gorgeous, gorgeous lawn.
Way to go, Brighton.
I'm, I'm a I'm a little bit envious, yeah. I love green grass. Okay, when asked about the inspiration of their garden, Castro said we wanted to create a bright spot on our street. Okay, when asked about the inspiration of their garden, the casual said we wanted to create a bright spot on our street for our neighbors. Thanks so much, you guys. Marcia Patanent. Marcia is not with us here tonight, but this is in North Point. Uh great intention here as well. So let me read a little bit about this one. The garden was selected for its outstanding job with their landscaping opportunities such as their perennial shrubs, red flowering bushes. Blue hydrangea, hanging baskets, sculpted evergreen near the front entry. And low greenery near the front walk with a lush maple tree. Great job. I want to just compliment also our team for their verbiage and descriptions of these properties. Wow. They're great writers. Uh next, Janice. Uh Janice Balla is not here this evening. This garden was selected for its pink dogwood. Look at that beautiful tree, huh? Uh the pink dogwood and evergreens. Uh when asked about the inspiration for her garden, she replied. Our garden is a vibrant oasis of color, texture and movement. Birds, insects and other wildlife brighten the space with their constant activity. Every part of the gardening process brings me joy and provides a peaceful respite. For ourselves and those who pass by. It's great intent. It's really nice. Alright. Home stretch here. This is slide fourteen. Uh the homes you see here were also selected as Great Garden Awards. Including gardens in Nature Landing, Jupiter, Vine Maple and Fairway. If any of our additional recipients are here with us tonight, I'd like to invite you up. Going once, going twice, a third time. We want to extend a congratulations for all our years, uh all of this year's Great Garden Award recipients. And thank you again for helping keep our community beautiful. Appreciate you guys. In closing, uh I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our board and the members. Uh I thank you for your time and your effort and commitment to the city. Um this takes a team. And um we're just thankful that we have great contributions and an active art and beautification board. If anyone has questions about our board or would like some um uh shows interest in it. We'd love to talk to you further. Thanks so much, everyone.
Okay, next on the agenda, I'd like to welcome Ray Stephenson, the president and CEO of Economic Alliance of Snohomish County. And he and former mayor of Everett. And he and Martin are going to give a presentation on an EASC partnership. Were you gonna say anything? Did you want to say anything?
I'll say a few words, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
Welcome to Ray and his team. Uh Ray and I have been meeting uh. On a quarterly basis uh since he took over and it's been great uh to meet with him and and Daniel as well. Uh Ray's been a valuable uh partner for the city Mill Creek. Uh not only have I been updating him on. Um the many large projects I've been working on uh led by Director Ryan. Uh but also kind of what's going on across the city as well on operational level. Thanks to Ray, the EASC is still here. I know that there's been challenges uh in in the past and it's good to see that they're. Uh still up and running and and so far uh he's been updating me on kind of ways that uh the organization can add value to the city Mill Creek. As it relates to uh working in Olympia for us and he'll talk a little bit about that as well as. Um providing some advice um on the industries around the area and how Mill Creek can um. Grow from an economic development standpoint and we'll be sharing him our development, uh economic development strategy as well. Uh in the near term as as Director Ryan starts working on that. So great, thanks.
Thank you so much. Good evening to the mayor, council members and city staff. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. You can see from this picture that I was forced to get a haircut. As was mentioned, my name is Ray Stephenson. I'm uh with the Economic Alliance in Snohomish County. We are the county's leading regional economic development organization focusing on building a stronger or resilient economy. Across our communities. The Economic Alliance is a public, private, nonprofit that brings together business, government and education partners. We serve as a connector, a convener and an advocate working to advance economic opportunities. The entire region, including right here in Mill Creek. Our work touches many areas you've already focused on from infrastructure. And housing to business growth, workforce development and innovation. We track and analyze regional industry and labor trends, support business expansion. And attraction and serve as a bridge to federal and state programs that can bring critical investment to your city. We also advocate at the state and federal level to ensure Snohomish County's voice and Mill Creek's needs. Are represented in funding decisions, policy conversations and economic strategy. So what does this mean for Mill Creek specifically? We can help you attract and retain businesses that fit your vision for economic growth. Using data tools, site readiness evaluations and targeted outreach. We can work with you to identify grant opportunities tied to infrastructure, housing, clean energy and broadband. And help craft competitive applications. We're also a resource for local economic data. Labor force insights, commuting patterns and employer needs. If you're planning downtown real civilization or overweight and commercial space. We can help provide the intelligence to guide those efforts. And we also represent the region at national forums like Select USA. We ensure cities like Mill Creek are part of a broader story that we tell investors, partners and site selectors. Mill Creek's partnership with the Economic Alliance isn't just appreciated, it's essential. We, your support ensures your voice is part of our regional strategy. It enables us to advocate more effectively aligned resources. And drive solutions that benefit both your residents and your entire city. We, when we speak with federal agencies, state officials or large employers, we can speak with a unified voice. One that includes the priorities of Mill Creek. I also want to extend a special thanks to Jeff Ryan, Director of Community Development and Planning. And City Manager Martin Yamamoto. These partnerships and collaboration with the Economic Alliance has been instrumental in strengthening. The connection between Mill Creek and our regional economic development efforts. As we look ahead, we'd love to deepen this partnership. That might include housing joint business outreach events, exploring sites for investment readiness assessment. Or aligning on workforce initiatives that serve Mill Creek residents. We're here to support your goals. We're committed to building an economy where every community has a seat at the table. Again, I want to thank you for your service to your community. I spent twenty-two years in the public sector and. Uh it's very much appreciated. I know your citizens appreciate it as well. So if you, I know you have a full agenda, if you have any questions or want us to come back at any time. We're more than happy to do that. So thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions? Yeah, Councilor Cavallari?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh thank you for your service all these years to the public. I don't, I don't think that uh. Maybe some are not aware of all the service you've conducted over the years for your community as mayor and 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 your other roles. Are you familiar with our um current operations moving toward the subarea and the potential growth and and and? What are your takes from that? How how robust? How how? What what are your thoughts on the matter?
Mill Creek is uh and I'll say this as a. Born and raised resident of Everett, you are as a city at the envy of the county. You have incredible lifestyle, a quality lifestyle. Uh that is really the envy of many. I think you absolutely have the right city manager. I would encourage you to be bold. To be. Very specific in what you want your city to look like. The connections to light rail I think are important to your city. I know there are discussions about annexations and who is going to annex to what city. Be courageous. I mean, you, if if you're not speaking for your citizens in your city, no one is. So that's the best advice I can give.
No, and and that's great. And and you've been successful in your endeavors and and. And I've always thought you're a very good man and very well intended. So thank you for coming here tonight and I and. When we start talking a little bit later about um growth and taxing districts, I I'm going to. Reuse some of the words you just used. So so thank you and it's good seeing you again and 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 God bless you in the future endeavors.
Thank you all.
Councilmember DK?
My my just hello. Mine was just more of a comment. So I'm um a a a member of the board for the Chamber of Commerce, Mill Creek Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to applaud your team or whoever put it together. I was unable to attend, but the your legislative day when you guys go down. The information you provided to all of the attendees from all the, you know, all the groups that you have to to go and speak down and even just like. Cause I I spoke about it with our executive director about even just the format that you had was just so clear and concise that someone who wasn't there. Um could really understand both what your intent was, that I love that you had different groups, you know, or different. Representatives within one group. I I just, the the event planning sounded fantastic and I really appreciate that. I think sometimes. Maybe that group, whoever put it together doesn't get, you know, the um applause. So I just wanted to say, was it? Oh, well, like again, I wasn't there, I wasn't a participant, but it made me want to participate in that way. Because I just thought it was really good. And I say this as a member who's part of our legislative committee that we go down to Olympia and so that was. You know, we have our own, what we do with AWC, which has its own method and we definitely have to focus, but I really appreciated seeing a different. Um angle and seeing how you thought of Snohomish County overall, a whole. Um I thought it was really good. So I just wanted to give that kudos. I didn't know you'd be here, else I would have spoken to you after, but uh I guess publicly I wanted to share that.
Share with the children's museum, what, the day? Olympia's.
Olympia Day. Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. It was Olympia Day. Thank you.
We have a legislative session uh in the fall that uh we have legislators in that talks about the session. I can tell you all that we're going to introduce legislation to hope hopefully balance. The playing field for shipbuilders, specifically the ferry system. I'm I'm still. Concerned about that bid going to Florida. So we're going to try to make that more equitable. Um so. There's more to come for that.
Appreciate all your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
I wanted, okay, hit the wrong things.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead. Really quick, Mayor Proton.
So sorry, Ray, I hit the wrong button, so I wasn't let up. Um and I am um currently the co-chair for the Snohomish. Um county tomorrow exploratory committee.
Yes.
And you and Mike Vaughn came and gave us a great presentation. And um the economic development is fresh in my mind today because we continued some discussions about economic development. And um I really appreciate all the work you guys are doing and some of the discussions. I'm sure this this will get back to you, but. From today, some of the things we were discussing is really the need to be focusing on the training for the new economy. And I think you had mentioned that when you were, when you were there to see us as well. And just really starting to look at the new economy and what's going to be coming in the future. And it sounds like um you guys in the county are. Already thinking ahead to that, which is great. So um just thank you for. The work that you're doing and I'm looking forward to working with you more and I'm looking forward to. The things that we can come up with where we can integrate better with SCT so that we can. Work with you on economic development and bring everybody in so that everybody's working together. So thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to be respectful of your time. I remember many late, late night meetings of the city councils.
Thank you again, appreciate it. Okay, next I'd invite up Rod Fleming, Detective Sergeant, to give an investigations presentation. Why he's coming up just on a personal note. I met Detective Sergeant Fleming shortly after six AM on July twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen. When I was sitting in the back of an ambulance up by Lushwab after getting hit by a bike and I was all bloodied. I separated shoulder being held up and this officer comes walking into the medic unit. The time he's wearing a sixty-pound vest, he's an officer, his thumbs up here and gets in and pauses and looks at me and. Aren't you on the city council? So, anyway, Detective Sergeant.
All healed up, no lingering injuries from that, I hope.
I've been mentally maybe.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh Mayor Proton and Council for having me here tonight to uh. Update you on your investigations unit and some of the uh exciting things we've been doing lately and kind of a little bit of insight and how our unit works. Um how do I proceed? Just the arrow? Perfect. Um so our primary investigation unit is made up of myself and Detective Chris White. Uh and Detective Jake McLean. I came onto the unit late in two thousand twenty-three after serving seven years as a patrol sergeant. Um where I got to interact with the mayor. Uh Chris White's been on the team since uh two thousand twenty. She also did a previous uh stint in investigations earlier in her career. Um as you know, detectives at this agency is an assignment that you're into for a certain number of years. Um and then occasionally detectives will work back to patrol and. Um maybe get promoted to sergeant or different things like that. So this is her second go-around. Uh and then in January, we were able to add Detective McLean to the team. He recently rejoined us from. Uh Kirkland Police Department where he was on a uh, he was the sergeant for their pro act team. So lots of great experience on the team, a lot of uh seasoned officers and detectives and um. So yeah, we're doing a lot of great things. Um also in my position, I do oversee um some other individuals, including the school resource officers. Uh Officer Munwiler at Jackson High School and Officer Wood at Heatherwood Middle School. Obviously their primary job is the safety and security of the students there and also culturing. Um you know, that positive police uh relationship with the students and staff there. But they do play a critical role in in helping investigations, both because they know all the juveniles out there who. Uh as you know, we've had some issues with juvenile crime lately. Um but also a lot of times juveniles are victims of crimes or maybe they're in a household where. There's some criminal activity. So they they act as a resource to check on and check in with those kids in those circumstances as well. Um over the summer, they did some uh targeting patrols for us on their bikes and stuff you may have seen on social media. So. Um we try and utilize them during their times away from school as well. Um and then I also oversee uh our support officer Larissa Pickett. Whose primary duties are parking, animal control and transports. And then I get the pleasure of working with our citizens patrol. Uh we've currently got five members um who play a huge role in all of our community outreach events and. Things we do in the community, including National Night Out, which was a great success this year. things we do in the community, including National Night Out, which was a great success this year. We have Coffee with a Cop coming up on October first out at Buffalo Espresso, so we hope to see you guys there. And we're having our, our next citizens academy, starting here at the end of September, which is a a great event that not only our detectives, but our officers instruct different blocks of instruction. So, putting all that together. As far as the primary detective unit, I wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of our caseload. So, these are going to be cases that are, are, you know, maybe they originated with a call for service by patrol. A report was taken and then that case is going to get assigned to a detective for, for follow-up or for more investigation. And I broke it down. I kind of wanted to look at the last year. So, the second half of two thousand twenty-four and the first half of two thousand twenty-five, obviously, we added that second detective in January. So, I was kind of curious how that changed our caseload. So, total cases assigned, sixty-three and seventy-five. Of those, roughly about half are felony cases. Most of our misdemeanor and, and our patrol guys do investigate a lot of their own cases. So, if there's misdemeanor or cases that they can follow through with on their own, they do that. So, but about half of the cases we get assigned are felonies. You know, you can see how many of them are violent crimes. The APS and CPS cases, we get those referrals directly to us. And so, some of them fall into the non-criminal category, but the ones that we look like crimes may be occurring, those get assigned out to a detective to follow up on. And then the last category is your special assaults. So, and this is just kind of a visual representation of those numbers there for, for those, those of us that are more visual. What this number doesn't capture is our detectives, besides their own cases, they do a lot of support work for patrol. So, they may end up creating a bulletin or, or helping a patrol officer with a search warrant and things like that where they're not the primary, you know, lead investigator, but they're, they're assisting on cases and helping the patrol officers. So, as far as arrests go, I looked at our total arrests from those same two periods of time. So, the arrests are individuals that we've arrested for various crimes. The charges filed, obviously, some of the arrestees have multiple charges, which is why that number is higher than the, than arrests. And again, felonies, violent crimes, property crimes, and arrests made in the special assault type crimes. And then again, just another visual representation of that. I know you guys recently got to hear from Detective White with her traffic duty. She wears a lot of hats in our department. And so, I wanted to touch on a couple more of those hats that she does. She's a member of the Snohomish County Multiple Agency Response Team, the SMART team. So, this team gets activated whenever there's an officer-involved incident where it's, it's obviously more of an independent investigation versus that officer's agency investigating it. So, in the second half of two thousand twenty-four, she worked one case and she was the lead investigator on that. So, anytime you're the lead investigator on one of those, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of coordinating with all the other members of the team and putting everything together. And then this year so far, she's been a part of three other cases where she wasn't the lead, but played a significant role. And then she's also our collision investigator for our major collisions. Luckily, in two thousand twenty-four, she didn't have any involvement in any of those. So far this year, she's had one within the city and then one where she assisted the county's collision team, which obviously there's times where we have to get their assistance as well. So, they have a pretty robust team and she assists them when possible. I wanted to touch on kind of some real successful cases we've had recently. In this case, I wanted to talk about our relationship with Lowe's. They're obviously one of our biggest retailers in the city. And over the last several years, Detective White has really established an efficient, effective relationship with them and their loss prevention team. In two thousand twenty-four, she also played a vital role in establishing the Organized Retail Crime Task Force, which this includes detectives and investigators from a lot of surrounding agencies. Because the people that go into our Lowe's also go into the liquid Lowe's and the Home Depots. And so, it's a really great way to you know, collaborate and identify a lot more of these people. They also do some, some proactive operations with that, where they'll all kind of get together and work a store and stuff like that. I also want to acknowledge the loss prevention staff there at Lowe's. They've been incredible and they're, they're very well-trained and very responsive. And they help us put together really successful cases. They also have Flock technology in their parking lot, which has been huge in helping us identify suspects as they're leaving the store. There's nothing better than having a license plate on, on the guy that just stole stuff. So, that, that's been huge.
So, so just a quick question. So, the flock cameras, is, is that the city's cameras or the store itself has its own flock cameras?
Store has.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Most of the big box retailers, Home Depot has them, I think, as well.
Yeah.
Very nice.
So, again, I looked at two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. So, these cases here aren't necessarily, so a lot of the times she gets these cases directly from Lowe's. So, a lot of them aren't ever assigned to her because she does all the backend work. And by the time I see it, it's, it's closed and an arrest has been made. So, this is kind of outside of her, you know, assigned cases that, that generated by patrol or whatever. So, forty cases in two thousand twenty-four, she was able to ID and make an arrest on thirty-two of those. Out of the twenty-five thousand-ish dollars in stolen merchandise, she was able to recover a little over twenty-two thousand. And in two thousand twenty-five, so far, of the thirty-seven cases, thirty-two IDs and arrests and fifteen thousand of the twenty-two thousand. Now, some of the numbers on the bottom, there might be overlap, meaning she might be arresting and recovering some stuff in two thousand twenty-five from a case generated in two thousand twenty-four, but just in general.
Do you know?
Correct.
Do you know when they started using the flock? Was it two thousand twenty-four?
I don't know the exact date, but it's been a couple of years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, is their system integrated with ours or independent?
It is integrated in the way that we can look up there. Yeah.
Thank you. Excellent.
Let's see. So, another case I wanted to touch on is the Silver Lake Water District property there, just east of Lowe's. In October of two thousand twenty-four, police were dispatched to a burglary. And in, in the end, we learned there was over a hundred thousand dollars in theft and the utility was temporarily put out of service. Detective White actually responded to this scene and assisted patrol officers. They weren't sure whether or not the people were still on scene, so they had to clear, you know, the whole property. But once that was done, she did a fantastic follow-up and extensive investigation and ended up making an arrest for burglary, first degree theft and damage to property. It turns out the suspect cut a hole in the external fence and then another hole into the shop and primarily was taking tools and things like that. There was luckily video at the property and in part due to her relationship with Lowe's, she knew there was cameras and, and resources there. The flock cameras in that case caught a vehicle and also cameras of the suspect. She was able to make connections with that vehicle. I mean, it's great when it's the registered owner, but in this case it wasn't. So, but she's able to dig and make connections on that vehicle and identify a suspect. Again, collaborating with detectives from other agencies who can positively, help positively identify that person. He might not be familiar to us, but other agencies might be familiar with who he is. And then she executed a search warrant on the suspect's phone records, which also helped place him at the location and time of the burglary. So, a lot of, you know, my task tonight was somewhat difficult because these are long, you know, dozens and hundreds of pages. And I'm trying to boil down to you, but a lot of extensive work goes into each one of these cases. And then another incident we had in January of two thousand twenty-five, we had a shooting at the Gateway Center. So, the Sprouts area up there. The patrol responded and then actually detectives were called out to this incident to investigate. And two vehicles were hit. There was no injuries at the time. There was a victim slash witness who was identified and we had a general description. We began canvassing the area for cameras while Detective White had to process a very large crime scene with lots of photographs and evidence to collect. There are several businesses in surrounding areas. Luckily, had footage that was very helpful. One business also had a license plate reader, similar to Flock, but it identified a vehicle license plate that helped us lead to a suspect. We found again, she found a person connected to that vehicle, which ended up being a rental car. And he had also been involved in at least one other shooting in Snohomish County. Again, leaned on some identification from law enforcement agencies surrounding us. And ultimately, the suspect was arrested for unlawful possession of a firearm, discharging a firearm and damage to property for the vehicles he hit. The victim in this case unfortunately was uncooperative and didn't want to be a victim. So, otherwise, we could have had also assault charges and stuff like that, but makes it difficult when the victim doesn't want to be a participant. And then after it was all said and done in May, we got some lab results back showing that the shell casings from that case were also related to a two thousand twenty-four drive-by shooting in Everett. So, unknown if it's the same guy, but obviously probably the same gun. And then the storage unit burglaries have been a, a real nuisance the last couple of years. They've really been on the rise. And sometimes they're difficult in that a lot of people don't go to their storage unit often. So, they might show up and it might have been six months or a year ago that they were victimized. And so, depending on how long the cameras and the video is still relevant or if the stolen merchandise has changed hands two or three times, you know, they can be difficult. But when Jake came, came on board, he really dug into this one case. We had a six-month window of time where the victim believed the, there was ten thousand dollars in high-end collectibles taken. And he was able to locate some of the items for sale on an online marketplace and arranged a meeting with the seller of these items. He was able to recover those items and that person led him to another suspect that he had purchased those items from. He found two more online sellers and located and contacted them. They described the same suspect as the first person that had sold them those products. And so, he executed a search warrant on the online marketplace and was able to identify the suspect. And that suspect had his own storage unit in Everett and he was contacted there and arrested for possessing and trafficking stolen property. And we recovered in that case almost ninety percent of the stolen items. You know, not all at once, but from all the different people that were selling them online, which was, which was great. Someone collecting those items too, there, there are things that are hard to find. So, a lot of. And then this is pretty recent. We had a special assault case where a victim met a person through an online dating app and Detective McLean and officers responded to the hospital. He did a really good extensive interview and obviously physical evidence was collected. Multiple search warrants of the dating app led to a possible suspect. He was contacted and interviewed and this led to additional victims in other jurisdictions. He ended up coordinating with the Watkins County Sheriff's detectives, which led to another unsolved case up in Watkins County. And another warrant, several warrants in this case, another one used to obtain DNA evidence from the suspect. And during this investigation, we learned of other pending special assault cases in Bellingham and Seadrivley. And in August, our case was completed and referred to the Snohomish County Prosecutor's Office. And I just really want to touch on, you know, these cases can be difficult and hard. And I really think his professionalism and empathy and his detail led a lot of those multiple victims who had not come forward before agreeing to come forward and participate, which was great to see. And questions?
Questions for Detective Sergeant? John, do you have any questions? I don't see you on the screen, so I can't see if your hand's up.
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Any question?
Hey, well done.
All right.
Well done. And, and I'm very happy to hear because I was skeptical of Flock in the early stages, mainly for the costs and, and privacy issues. But I see with the collaboration of private property owners, I, I, I see the potential for, you know, success. And you've obviously outlined some success stories on here. So, I think that's huge. And, 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 you know, embracing technology, it's not always easy, but but it's probably necessary at some point. So, well done. Congratulations, all of you. Pat's on the back. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay, we have no old business on the agenda tonight, which brings us to new business, Item G, Design Review Appointments. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Myself, Councilmember Allison and Mayor Holscall all met and interviewed for the, a couple of people for the Design Review Board. We are thrilled and happy to see David Hamilton is, was willing to reapply and his knowledge and experience are really invaluable. So, we have two vacancies on the Design Review Board and one incumbent that had an expired term was Tina Hastings and she chose not to reapply. And incumbent David Hamilton did reapply. So, we had two interviews and excellent candidates and we would like to make a motion to reappoint David Hamilton to the Design Review Board for a three-year term ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. And also to appoint Mark Beals to a three-year term ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six-zero. Councilmember Cavalier had stepped out of the room at the moment. Brings us to Item H, ordinance related to business license threshold. Mr. Horn.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. I have an ordinance presented to you about updating our business license thresholds. So, agenda today is to understand why we're updating it and what those changes are. And we're going over the state business license model ordinance, required changes, timeline, and then a discussion if you have questions. So, first up, in two thousand seventeen, the state passed a a law that requires cities to develop a business license, business license model ordinance in conjunction with the Association of Washington Cities. That happened and the first model ordinance was published in two thousand eighteen. And this year, the exemption thresholds and the model ordinance were increased. So, first, what is a exemption threshold? So, that means anyone out of the city or any business that's headquartered out of the city needs a city business license if they do a total value of work in the city that's greater than the threshold. So, if you do less, currently, if you do less than two thousand dollars of work in the city, you don't need a license. If you do more than that, you wouldn't need a license. So, the, the model ordinance has been updated to raise the threshold to four thousand dollars from two thousand dollars. It also has been updated to automatically adjust for inflation every four years. The new thresholds are supposed to be in place by January first of two thousand twenty-six, although we need to have our code in place by beginning of October, so we can sufficient notice to the Department of Revenue so they can update our business license applications online. So, again, October first is when we need to have this updated by, and there's a seventy-five day So again, October first is when we need to have this updated by, and there's a seventy-five day notice period for the D O R. Then the new law going to effect, January first, two thousand and twenty six. Here's a specific code language if you're curious. Um, basically, the red text is what we're adding. It's just updating the threshold to four thousand, then a complex way to calculate the C P I every four years. Does anyone want to read through this or should I move on?
Move on.
Okay. Any questions?
How long is a is a business license good for a year?
Yes.
So this would apply to an existing business that met the threshold when they have to renew for the next year?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other, any questions?
Yeah, so so who's like, I I don't want to use the word target. Who who's the focus of these fees, like online? Ebayers and retailers, is that?
Yeah, so is anyone who is who is headquartered out of the city doing business in the city, so like if you uh hire a contractor to replace your water heater, they would have a need to have a city license to do work in the city. If you um um, online retailers typically don't need a um a license. Basically, it's anyone coming into the city to do to work the outside.
So if I call a roofer that's not North Creek roofer and he comes in or he has to have a Mill Creek City Business License and pay these fees?
Correct.
Um, but the threshold is if they're only if the roofer doing three thousand.
I have a quick question.
Just a sec, John.
Oh.
Sorry, I didn't have the mic on, apologies. So if the roofer's coming in and they're charging less than four thousand dollars, they don't need the license?
Correct.
If there was a roofer that would do that.
I should, I should, I should clarify.
They don't bring in more than four thousand during the year, not on a particular project.
Yeah, per year and uh just be perfectly accurate. If you require, if any business requires a specialized license to do work in the city, like uh like if you are installing a water heater and need a like a plumbing permit, you'd have to get a license regardless because it's a specialized trade, and so this this threshold is only for businesses that don't require a specialized.
Was the four thousand from Department of Commerce's model ordinance?
Yes.
Councilmember Teckler?
Yeah, Justin, I had a quick question. How does this relate to um, this brought my attention? These pop-up locations that do food um on the side of the street, do they have to get a special license to do that in a year? Does that work?
Yeah, so you would need to um to, if you're a pop-up and you did more than four thousand, you would need a a license. I believe you do need a special uh
Oh.
I'm not hundred percent sure if that counts as specialized license, if the the Department of Health um, I don't think it does. So it is four thousand of sales you need to in the city, you need a permit, permit not a license.
Uh, Council, uh, thank you for that question regarding the pop-up questions. That's an ongoing issue that we're working on a coordinated response on. And then we'll be able to report back on the specific requirements for that moving forward.
I have another question.
Yeah, Councilmember Cavalry?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so so how would that work now, let's say vendors for our festival? Mill Creek Festival, will all of them need a specific, not just a food handler's permit, but a four thousand dollar license to come and sell in the festival their wares?
Correct, yes. If you were coming in, you would need a license if you did them more than the the threshold. There are cities that have chosen to increase the threshold higher than the state's minimum. Um, I've seen some that go up to ten thousand uh per year. We could if we wanted to, but this is the the state minimum required to do.
Yeah, and and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just, I'm just wondering or thinking out loud, are we are are we making it more difficult or tighter for a business to operate?
Just just to clarify, the the cost of the license is not four thousand dollars. The cost of the license itself is what, like?
I believe it's twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars.
Right, the threshold of business.
The threshold by which you have to earn is oh it was what was increased to two thousand.
That actually makes it easier.
Yeah, right.
Because the the number's bigger.
Correct.
Thanks for the clarification.
Councilmember Duque?
So someone was at the Mill Creek Festivals, but they are less than four thousand, but more than two thousand, so this year they would have had to
So.
But now to leave, so I I don't even know if Mill Creek Festival is of who they are becoming. I don't even know if that's the right example, but I just wanted to make sure I was following along with that.
So business license requirements are typically um covered by the special event permit itself, yeah.
That that's why, that's why I was like, I think the Mill Creek Festival counts, but I liked where that was, I was on to it.
Well, it's gonna require the business owners to be proactive and have a little foresight because you don't bring the money in and then say, ooh, I have to pay for the permit. You have to pay for it before you start doing business. Any other questions? Do we have a cheat sheet?
We do.
Maryland commotion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter five point zero four of the Mill Creek Municipal Code relating to business licenses and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Halls in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to Item A, an ordinance related to amending Mill Creek Municipal Code, chapters ten point sixteen, bicycles, skateboards, and similar devices, and ten point twenty-eight, motorized foot scooters, and other whe- wheeled devices on public roadways.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, Council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you uh about an ordinance amendment that may help us address some of the issues that we've been experiencing with e-bicycles and motorcycles that are propelled by electric motors. Maybe that's a better definition than we'll use. Um, so obviously, there's been a significant increase in the use of these types of vehicles. And we're trying to do our best to approach this through some small adjustments early on in education, so that the public knows exactly what's going on. And I think that um this is a really well-suited way to address this. It gives the opportunity to make some alternative to enforcement actions, uh recommendations to the council that are already within the within the city code for other wheel devices. So we have two uh ordinance amendments that we're looking at. Both happen in uh Title Ten, one in section ten sixteen, which covers bicycles, which also includes e-bicycles. The other is in uh chapter ten point two eight. That covers covers other wheel devices such as electric scooters and things of that nature. Um, we're hoping to add uh the definition of motorcycles to that title or to that, excuse me, to that chapter. So once we get there, I'll kind of give you an explanation of that. So these uh, the ordinances uh were enacted in two thousand and four and ordinance uh ten sixteen, bike, bicycles, skateboards, and similar devices. What we're looking to add in these regulations is the negligent operation. So we started talking about e-bicycles and the speed at which they travel and the fact that they're allowed on sidewalks and things of that nature. We looked at some of the uh provisions in chapter ten twenty-eight, which talked to to the negligent operation of said device, so negligent operation of a bicycle um traveling at speeds too fast for the sidewalk um and and those types of things. That's why we added that to the ordinance. Um, that was our first recommendation. Um, in regards to for the safety of the operator and the persons, another persons, and that's that negligence component. Negligence negligence uh being operated in high speeds in and out of traffic, not letting people know that you're passing those types of things. Uh, the other thing that we added to ten sixteen was the requirement for helmets. Um, this city does not have a helmet requirement for bicycles or e-bicycles and quite frankly, the speeds at which these e-bicycles travel. Um, it, I think it would be a very good recommendation for individuals to be required to wear helmets. The other change is in uh chapter ten point two eight, in the motorized foot scooters and other wheel devices on public roadways. This is where we added some sections, um the definition of motorcycle, which allows us to have additional restrictions on individuals under the age of sixteen, rather than just what is available under the R C W. A lot of the cities are utilizing strictly the R C W to enforce these rules, which is a a fine means of of addressing the issue. Um, but we thought that there might be some alternative uh ways to address this. And that is uh addressed in the actual impoundment or seizure of the device. So we have an individual who's fourteen years old. He's riding a motorcycle that's propelled with an electric motor. He didn't understand the laws when they were put into place or understand that he needs to have a license. He doesn't understand that that vehicle needs to be op- as all the safety required equipment. Um, there's an alternate way that we could actually seize that motorcycle and have his parents come pick it up here at the police department with a fine associated with the fact that there was a violation that occurred. So the fine is payable to the police department and that would go to the general fund. So those are recommendations. Do you have a red line copy that was provided in your packet? Um, I hope you are all able to review that. It gives you a little bit more understanding as to what changes were amendments are being proposed or sorry, to the council, and without I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, could you go back to the uh screen with the helmet requirement? So that would be for bicycles, skateboards, and similar devices?
And and which includes e-bicycles.
Right.
Yeah, so it within the definition of bicycles in this section of the uh municipal code, um bicycles is defined as is um electric bicycles.
Okay.
Councilman Cavalry?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, putting the word motorcycle in here everywhere, is that i- is that maybe a little overreaching for motorcycle users? And maybe not the term motorbike or motor scooter?
So the
The reason, sorry, interrupted you. The reason I ask that because we know the R C Ws already exist for those other motor vehicles, so.
Yeah, so motorcycle is a defined term. So we want to make sure that we're utilizing the the term that it is appropriate. That being said, what we're really looking for at the change in this section by adding motorcycles is for the individuals under the age of sixteen that are operating motorcycles.
Okay.
So when we have individuals that are licensed and endorsed, those individuals will be addressed through the R C W. Or if they're not endorsed, whatever violation that might occur for individuals over the age of sixteen would be handled under that title.
Okay, okay.
For individuals that are under the age of sixteen, where we don't necessarily maybe want to go down the criminal justice path, we would then utilize this alternative measure and seize their motorcycle, impound it to the police department, and their parents could come pick it up for a fee.
And uh and lastly, uh around the fee piece of it or the fine piece of it, I saw we've raised that to two fifty, I agree with it. Uh, what are your thoughts on an enhancer or a multiplier, second offense five hundred, third offense, one thousand, and automatic impoundment or seizure?
I'm thinking that is the direction that we could go in the future if we saw that that, I'm hoping that this process here would address um a lot of the concerns. I think that a lot of the parents will be educated by this as well and more than likely have some uh other decisions to be made about the actual use of the motorcycle.
The reason I say that, and I'm not trying to tie up a lot of time, remember you and I had this conversation, I told you about the parent that uh the public doesn't know, but this parent called me and wanted to know why his son got a third ticket for speeding within his school zone and wanted to know what I could do about it. And I was, I was pretty shocked by the question. I said, what do you do about it? You take the damn keys away. That's what you do about it. And so there are folks that just think that, you know, it's just not a big deal. They're going to pay the infraction, so perhaps this road might be a a good one to go down as well.
For the helmet.
Pardon? Yeah, I get you. So anyway, that's where my heart was in uh in in wanting to en- enhance the fine feature or or multiplier, so.
And again, these, you know, we're really starting to understand that the ordinances are living documents, right? They're gonna be changed with as time progresses and and that might be a decision that we make in the future.
Councilmember Duque?
Thank you very much. I know you've heard about this a lot. I know you from all sides, from us, from residents, neighbors, you know, everyone, even just people who know what your profession is and you're probably just like trying to live, live a normal day, and you get this question. Um, so I support all this, but the helmet situation. The fact that I just don't think we're gonna go after enforcement of skateboarders without a helmet and those kind of things, um, I'm I'm hesitant on to approve something like that when I just don't because then there's not teeth for like all elements of it, or or I just don't, I just don't see us. I I just, I don't, and I don't know how important that is. I am a huge supporter of a helmet. I do wear it, but there's all these cases of it. I know some cities have it by age, if you're under eighteen, um, there's things like that. So and I know you probably looked at all of it because I know how this process is. So that would be my one thing that I'm not comfortable with all of this is the helmet aspect in that it's just a requirement for helmets overall. Sure, most public safety people would absolutely disagree with me, and I don't know why I'm saying it this way, but I, there's just an element of like the enforcement part, like if we see, there's so many people who don't wear helmets. And I don't know if this is what we're, I think if we focus on that, this, all this project that we're working on will get sidelined by this element if that's the the direction we go for enforcement. All of you don't have to agree. None of you have to, you could all, whatever, but this is the the one aspect. And so when I was looking into it and I was trying to figure out like what other, what are other cities around us do? Because I was very surprised that we didn't have something already for helmets for bicycles. Um, I'm gonna stop speaking, but go ahead. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna give you time.
There's definitely a a a variety of ways that cities are approaching this. You know, King County has an ordinance that mandates bicycle helmets. Um, the city of Lynnwood has a ordinance that requires bicycle helmets. Uh, a lot of other cities are back and forth, you know, there, I I believe Bothell does have the age um where it talks about a certain age, a certain age a helmet is required, or up to a certain age, I should say, and a helmet is required. Um, I think that you know, when you look at the time since the ordinances were passed and what has changed from th- those times to now with the one-wheels, the electric bicycles, and things of that nature, and the speeds in which they travel. Um, you know, you have a class three bicy- a class three e-bicycle, which is, you know, moving at fifty miles an hour down the roadway. You know, at what point do we say, hey, listen, and you know, this it for ease of it and at the best, you know, practice for safety? Now, I I know that there's a lot of mixed feelings on it, but to to sit there, to try and pinpoint makes it more difficult to enforce if we sit there and say, okay, this person under this age, under this bicycle, under that classification, it makes it a lot more difficult to enforce, rather than just saying if you're riding a bicycle without a helmet, it's a violation of the city mill creek.
Councilmember Paddock?
I actually had a question about the helmets, and is there a differential in like types based on vehicle or?
There is. There are certain like, uh, su- such as a motorcycle requires a Department of Transportation-approved helmet.
And that's all in the ordinance, all somewhere else.
Yeah, it, there are definitions in there that, and that's falling under a licensed operator, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So then that's, it's all, it's all broken down in those in those categories. There's, if it's not mentioned specifically in the ordinance, it's in R C W or in the ordinance somewhere else.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Council, Councilman Cavalry?
Thanks, Mayor. And 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 just to clarify, um, we're we're not trying to pull kids off their skateboards that are that don't have a helmet. What we're trying to do is address the I mean, we've all seen the citizens come in here. We've all received the emails. We've all probably had an experience where we almost ran one of these folks over traveling at these crazy speeds. We're looking for a mechanism to intervene in those moments and and unfortunately uh just the way, just the way it is, it has to be kind of a a a blanket um, a blanket technique, I guess, to respond to the ongoing threat.
And I would say also um for officers to stop and speak with an individual, of course, we have the ability to do social contacts and say, hey, wouldn't it be great to do it, wear your helmet there? But if we have a purpose behind it, if there's a violation that's occurred and now we have a purpose to talk to somebody, it makes that interaction between the officer and the individual so much easier uh for the officer to understand that like, this is what my intent is here. You know, it doesn't necessarily have to end in enforcement, it could end in education.
We talked about it and and
Which is more than likely what's gonna happen.
Can you, can the people online please mute?
But but at least it opens the opportunity for the officers to have that interaction do based on the fact that a violation has occurred.
Councilmember Duque?
It's okay for me to speak again. Um, I'm not, I'm never comfortable with like the comment that uh Councilmember Cavalry made of like, that's not the intent, we're not gonna pull over it. If you put it, we're not gonna pull over someone just because they, you know, have a, they don't have their, that's not the intent of it. You put it in, so that's the intent, and that's what you're, that's what you should be doing then, because that's the enforcement, that's what we talk about when we let these little things slide. However, based off of what you've shared about um about the blanket laws and enforcement, I I will agree with this, but I do want to like flag, I hope we can think through, you know, uh this aspect, and I I know that there's better things, obviously, that that's always the comment, right? There's better things officers can do than like pull me over, and if you're saying that there's an opportunity for like talking through, I would just hate that like that's what we've become, where you're just, you see someone who looks a certain way and then you're gonna pull them over with the excuse that they're not wearing um a helmet, maybe because of how they look. I don't think that's how the city of Mill Creek works. But I'm saying that is currently how things are happening now and I'm uncomfortable for any like little thing to just pull someone over then to ask them additional questions that may not be relevant. That's where I'm coming from, but I will support this.
Other questions?
Councilmember Steckler has his hand raised.
Oh, Councilmember Steckler.
Oh, thanks. I um, I did want, I was, I wanted to address this topic as well. Some of you may not know this, but I I spent eight years running a bicycle helmet company. And so I'm very uh experienced with the the horrific uh damage from people not wearing helmets. Um, so I am a big helmet supporter. I I just have to say that because it's the right thing to do. Um, I know that some people consider it part of the their constitutional rights to make a choice whether or not I want to wear a helmet, but I just, I just support it because it's it 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 works. It saves lives. So uh the point I wanted to make too is that helmet manufacturers, like my company uh and others and through the state, make helmets available to cities that have helmet mandated mandation laws um to make available to to families that maybe the kids can't afford a bicycle helmet, especially children uh that can't afford a bike helmet or multiple helmets. I mean, if you all of a sudden have four kids and you're going to go out and buy four bicycle helmets, it could be considered dress. It might be a a positive to to look into this uh first from the state standpoint to see what they would make available to us. Um, and then Mill Creek could really be known in a very positive light that not only do we mandate bicycle helmets be worn, but if if citizens have a financial issue, we can make bike helmets available to those people. And I think that would go a long way to what is really the spirit of who Mill Creek is and how we'd like to treat our citizens. So I I would support this and I would also support and be willing to help in maybe finding a source for either free or extremely low priced bike helmets to make available. Thank you.
Mayor Potem.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I actually have a question. So those one wheel things that people are standing on and riding down, flying down the road, are they really supposed to be on the road with in those?
So it's considered another wheel device in most communities and it there are no restrictions for them other that it would be similar to a unicycle.
Okay.
Now, it depends on what their power, they're powered and other things, but it doesn't fall under the definition of a motorcycle because it's not driven with handlebars.
Okay.
Um, so it would be classified as another wheel device. And we would have to address that. Yeah, that would be something, but that again under our, under our ordinance, it would be considered an other wheeled device.
Perfect.
And it would be covered under the e-bicycles or under the classification at what um how many watts the motor was.
Okay, perfect. I've been seeing those around and it freaks me out every time I see them driving or riding down the road on those. So so thank you for that. And I don't know, um, to Councilmember Steckler's um point. I don't remember to South County Fire actually give out some helmets. They do, don't they?
There's some
So that's a, yeah, so that's um a resource there.
Part of our traffic safety council agreement with through Target Zero teams. There's also some funding there that I believe is available. So we're we're also researching that. We also want to make it, you know, possible for everybody to still enjoy riding a bicycle.
Any other questions? Do you have a T G?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Move to adopt an ordinance of the city of Mill Creek, Washington, amending Mill Creek Municipal Code Chapters ten point one six. Bicycle, skateboards and similar devices and ten twenty-eight motorized foot scooters and other wheeled devices on public roadways and setting an effective date.
Second. Any discussion?
Just, yeah, just really quick that um I I I really appreciate how fast you brought this back to us because um I think we've heard from half a dozen citizens that have come in here and 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 just uh to say complain is an unfair word, pointed out hazards to the rest of us and and here we are acting. So good job, uh every council member up here for taking it very serious and the city staff for moving so quickly on it. So so thank you.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. And finally, this study session, Councilmember Cavalieri has been along for the studies session on special purpose district revenue sources.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and kick this off before I hand you over to the finance director. I think it's good timing. It's a good opportunity to just kind of uh start planting some seeds and some information as we start to get into these final number of months towards the end of the year. Uh, we are in the midst of planning for our twenty-five, twenty-six biennium, uh budget biennium. Uh, it's my second biennium um that I've gone through as a city manager and um we have some big decisions to make. Finally, we're fully staffed. Uh, we've built our teams over the past few years. Uh, and I believe we're really positioned well now to address a lot of the big projects. Um, continue moving these the operational needle uh and planning for the long term. I will continue in twenty twenty-six looking at continued resource needs. Uh, I think we're far from meeting our mission of being oh, how should I say that? It's I think it's providing outstanding public services in a fiscally responsible manner. The outstanding part is what we're missing and we're we're moving in that direction, but we're far from it. Um, we'll keep keep up on on moving projects forward, CIP and other projects across the city. Uh, we will continue addressing things that is everything deferred across the city that we've already talked about in in many cases. Again, these 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 final um few months, uh we will be holding critical decisions as it relates to revenue stream opportunities. Uh, what I'm referring to is different types of tools that we should be considering to address the increasing cost of operating as our uh service demands continue to increase as well. And as we reach the beginning of the year, that may increase even further. Uh, to begin, depending on council's direction on the number of strategic uh discussions that we will have next year. Um, Director Lombard will bring forward, uh in on April first, she did bring forward, she will probably talk about this, but I'll bring it forward anyway. Um, on April Fools uh of of this year, she did bring forward uh some high level discussions on uh revenue opportunities. Um, special revenue districts as well as uh some utility taxing options and other uh taxing options uh to council. Um, some of the things to consider as we start to move forward um addressing what you had said as one of the levers. Uh, moving forward. A few facts regarding what was discussed in the past is in twenty twenty-six, we will have a one point five million dollar uh mismatch between revenue expenditures. It's not the same. We have a healthy, healthy surplus, probably projecting above five million. But keeping in mind that surpluses do not solve long-term problems, uh they do solve short-term um issues. And twenty twenty-eight, again, we will experience a potential deficit where the lines will eventually cross. Um, financial policy discussions, we will have those also uh in a timely manner, probably in the coming weeks. So we'll have those before we have some bigger discussions on um uh how we adjust for the mid buy. We have a lot of capital projects, something to also consider as we move forward and talk about these taxing districts because um some of the things we'll bring forward both on certain types of infrastructure. Um, also keep in mind the differentiation between uh the taxing districts and the impact that uh they do not have on the general fund. Uh, they more or less have maybe indirect impact in some cases, depending on what types of districts we're talking about. So um with that, I'll hand it over to the finance director.
Um, thank you, City Manager Yamamoto. Good evening, City Council, um staff. Um, it's a pleasure tonight to um do this discussion with you as our city manager mentioned. Um, this um topic for special district is one of the um items that you've requested during um the January twenty twenty-five strategic um planning retreat. Um, so as we move forward, um again, the purpose of this is just to give you a high level of review of the districts that are authorized by the um RCW. Um, special purpose districts are a form of local government that is not a city, town or county. And they perform a limited number of specialized functions as defined by state law. Um, and some of these functions um you may be familiar with um because some of the districts have spoken to city councils, so that might be um the Port District, Everett Port District. We've had the hospital last week, um and they presented, uh that was the Evergreen Health. Um, it could also be that they are uh to provide airport services, fire, school district, library, cemetery, flood control, housing, um parks and recreation. So there are about over eighty types of special purpose districts that have been authorized by RCW. Um, majority of the uh the districts have an independent governing um body overseen by an elected commissioner, supervisor or director. It may, they may also be appointed officials or trustees or overseen by other um officials acting in ex officio role. Um, also the districts are or may be initiated by either a petition or resolution by the legislative authority with election to follow. And some of them may require a feasibility study on financing or project area. And there 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 may be some negotiations with other taxing agencies. The revenues that are raised when some of the districts include regular property taxes or excise levy. Um, again, those are property taxes. They may assess um sales tax, special assessments, user fees or charges and bonds. Um, but keep in mind that because these are special purpose district and your revenues that they raise are restricted for the purpose of that district. So in that sense, um, the city manager is absolutely correct. Some of these districts are not a direct benefit to the general fund because the revenues that you're going to raise are not, cannot be used for general services, but rather just for the specific purpose of that. Some of of the um districts would have an indirect impact or indirect benefit to the um to the general fund as and I'll um touch on that in a little bit.
In theory, they could help if we were subsidizing a road fund, for instance, with the general fund, but we have not done that.
That's um, so yeah, so as um as we go through, I'm not discussing all of the eighty different types of districts. I've narrowed it down to nine.
Have a motion to extend the meeting to four AM.
I've narrowed it down to nine and um the materials are are extensive, so we are going to um concentrate on um the following areas as a comparison. Um, we'll talk about um nine special districts. We are going to compare them in um their enabling um statute, the purpose, um formation, their governance, their funding. And if I have um and then the the number of districts that are currently um existing right now and some examples, if I if I can't find them. Um, so for those of you that um would like to follow this um uh page is on or this item is on page one oh one of one forty-seven of your um agenda packet. And so this first page talks about the special purpose district and majority of them are related to park services or recreation services. So the first one is the Metropolitan Park District is considered a municipal corporation enabled by RCW Chapter thirty-five point sixty-one. And the purpose of this um district is to manage, control, improve, maintain and acquire parks, parkways, boulevards and recreational facilities. The formation of this um district requires a either a resolution or a petition of at least fifteen percent of the voters um residing in the area that's to be included in the district. Uh, this may be subject to potential review by the boundary re- review board. And the hearing is not required. A public hearing is not required for the formation, but it is required for annexation. There are at least three types or forms of um governance depending on um the boundaries that are included. Uh, it could be either five elected commissioners or if located within the city or unincorporated area, it's the legislative authority of that jurisdiction. Now, if the um district is located in multiple jurisdictions, then it will require appointed members of those jurisdiction. Now, the fiscal administration or administrator for this district is the county treasurer. The funding that could be raised, um they are allowed to raise uh regular levy, property taxes. Um, there is a fifty cents per thousand AV and there's a not plus an optional quarter cent per thousand AV. They're also allowed to assess um or or uh yes, assess excise levies. Um, they may issue, they may also issue bond obligations and they may create local um improvement districts. Um, currently, there are fifteen districts or Metropolitan Park districts. Um, and as an example, I found that Bainbridge Island Metropolitan Park and Recreation District is one of them. They were there, they um they were established in nineteen sixty-five, um primarily to provide recreational and cultural programs. And now they include a stewardship of over fifteen hundred acres of open space. Um, the next district is Parks and Recreations, uh Recreation Districts, also a municipal corporation enabled by RCW Chapter thirty-six point sixty-nine. And their purpose is to provide leisure, uh provide leisure time activities, facilities, recreational facilities of a nonprofit nature as a public service to the residents of their geographical area included within their boundary. RCW defines recreational facilities as um parks, playgrounds, gymnasium, uh swimming pool, golf courses, community centers, bicycle and bridle paths. Um, this also requires a resolution by the legislative authority or at least fifteen percent of the uh voters. A hearing is required in this case, um followed by an election. The governing body is um made up of a board of five elected commissioners from designated districts with staggered four-year term. Their um fiscal administrator is also the county um treasurer. Uh, similar to the first one, they are allowed to levy regular taxes. In this case, they are limited to sixty cents per thousand. Um, and they need to be reauthorized every five years and subject and it is subject to the five uh five dollar ninety cent um regular levy limit. They may also issue bonds. They may create local and uh improvement district and also impose uh user fees to the users. The third um park district is the Parks and Recreation Service Area. It's a quasi municipal corporation enabled by RCW Chapter thirty-six point six to eight point four hundred to uh six twenty. Um, and their purpose is to finance, acquire, construct, improve, maintain or operate any park, senior citizen activity center, zoo, aquarium and or uh recreational facilities. Uh, similar to the first two, they are, uh they may be formed by resolution by the uh legislative body or petition of at least ten percent in this case of the voters. Um, a visibility study is required plus a hearing and then an election to follow. Um, if the district is found within the county, then it's the county legislative authority uh will be the governing body acting as ex officio. If it's a town or a city, it is uh or is include uh included, or if it's a multi-county, then it's an interlocal agreement. And then again, their um fiscal authority or fiscal administrator is the county treasurer. Um, similar to the Park and Recreation District, this um uh district is also uh authorized to levy regular property taxes with a maximum of sixty cents per thousand. Again, um it requires uh reauthorization by the voters every five years. And it is subject to the five dollar ninety cent uh regular levy limit. They are allowed to uh levy excise property taxes. Um, they may also issue bonds, um create local improvement district and again imposed fees. Um, in this example or in this um specific district, there are seven existing right now. And one example is the North Shore Parks Recreation Service Area that was established in nineteen eighty-eight uh which shares the boundaries with North Shore School District and they were um created uh for the development, construction and maintenance of park facilities in Bothell, Kenmore. created uh for the development, construction and maintenance of park facilities in Bothell, Kenmore, Woodinville, um King County and Snohomish Counties. Are there any questions? Moving.
Do you want questions now like about just the parks or do you want to wait till the end? Okay, uh so the um on the first one, could could theoretically that be a way to fu- if that district were to set up Metropolitan Park District for the city, would that be a way to fund the servicing, maintenance and even expansion of the parks we currently have?
It could, yes. So long as it's consistent with the purpose of the R C W, yes.
Okay. Okay. And it said, and I might have missed this, I'm sorry, but one of three forms set by statute. Did you mention the three forms of governance?
Yes, so it could be um when it goes to vote, um the voters have to decide whether they want it with the five um elected commissioners. Or if it's within the unincorporated jurisdiction, it's the legislative body of either the county or the city, if it's just one. And then if it's located within multiple jurisdiction, then it will be appointed members of both jurisdiction.
Thank you. I I think we might be getting a little bit far in the weeds because I don't know how that would work with a fa- facility district that has its own governance structure. Who owns the parks? Does the city have to transfer them into the park district to be owned and operated? I mean, we don't have to answer that now, but that's why I think there's some details with this of what they could be used for.
We could follow up with that. Um, moving to the other uh park districts, we now have the Public Facilities District. This is enabled by, for us at least, for the cities, would be the R C W thirty five um dot fifty seven. Um, and the purpose of this is to acquire, construct and operate sports facilities, entertainment facilities, convention facilities and regional centers and and the related parking facilities. Now, the code define defines the regional center as a convention, conference or special event center or any combination thereof um and related um facilities serving a regional population. Um, and this was uh so I think the the R C W was specific to, this is uh applicable to any city, town or group of contiguous cities or towns in a county of less than one million population um that can create this um type of district and it is intended to support and encourage economic development. And the formation of this is either by resolution or inter-local agreement. Uh, the governing body is made up of um the appointed board of directors, either a five or a seven member. Um, and the membership is um set by statute. Um, and but before the formation, the issuance of debt or debt uh or long-term lease, purchase or development of the um district is um requires a feasibility uh a financial feasibility review by the Department of Commerce. Um, for the funding part of it, uh this district is only allowed to levy exa- to levy excess uh levies, um that is voter approved. Um, they can also um charge admission tax of up to five percent, parking tax of up to ten percent, bonds, lodging taxes, state shared um sales tax credit as well as user fees and charges. Currently, there are twenty five um types of public facilities district. Uh, an example of them, I have three. There's Edmonds uh for their sports center for the arts. There's Ev- Everett Public Facilities District for the Angel of the Winds Arena and Linwood for the Linwood Event Center. Um, the next district is a transportation benefit district. We talked about this uh last April. Um, and it's set by statute uh chapter thirty six point seventy three and it's intended to raise revenue for specific transportation projects, usually through vehicle license fees or sales taxes. Um, improvements can range from roads and transit service to sidewalks and transportation demand management, construction, maintenance and operation costs of uh are all eligible. So in this case, the uh the vehicle owners are paying for the cost of the maintenance improvement of uh city streets. Um, it requires an ordinance following a public hearing or by inter-local agreement if the district will include other um uh other jurisdictions. The Transportation Benefit District, um if they share uh the same boundaries as the jurisdiction, establishing jurisdiction, then the governing body will be the uh go- will be the legislative body of that district or that the the establishing district. And if it's a um going to be including a multiple jurisdiction, then it will be um governed by inter-local agreement. And again, the R C W would provide the the uh mix of the governing um board. Um, the funding sources, as I mentioned, would include sales tax, sales and use tax of up to point three percent and effective January, uh excuse me, July one of twenty twenty two, there's an optional point one percent that may be imposed by a simple majority vote. But this sun sets after ten years, but we can renew or it could be renewed for an additional ten years with voter approval. Um, but if there's debt related to it, um then it could exceed the ten-year repayment. It could also assess for or uh uh do a vehicle license fees of up to one hundred dollars per vehicle. That would require a simple majority vote. Um, alternatively, the council may impose uh up to fifty dollars in a series of graduated steps without a vote. Um, there are several other funding options available such as um in certain areas. They have uh border area fuel taxes, bonds, they may have impact fees, but these are seldom used um in other agencies. So there are so, there are also certain exceptions. Um, for instance, farm vehicles, A T V, off-road, campers, mopeds, those are exempted from um the vehicle license fees. Um, right, currently, there's about uh greater than a hundred and twenty cities and towns that have um transportation benefit districts and there are about six counties that have um this type of of district.
And most of the cities in South County have them. Snohomish County is getting ready to roll out a councilmatic. The one detail in the councilmatic, I believe, to be able to do that, you have to make the district correspond to the boundaries of your jurisdiction. You can't do it smaller than that. But they're getting ready to roll out a forty-dollar card tab in unincorporated Snohomish County.
Um, so for the um other examples would be uh right now, uh Montlake Terrace uh is a set, has twenty dollars and they raise about three hundred and fifteen thousand a year. Um, Edmonds raises, um they charge forty dollars and they raise about one point four million. Kenmore, also forty dollars and they um get about seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for the city of Mill Creek, uh based off of fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty registered vehicles. Um, and if we assess between twenty to fifty dollars, we could raise from two hundred ninety-four thousand to about seven hundred and thirty-six thousand a year. Um, the next uh district is a community renewal district, uh authorized by chapter thirty five point eighty-one. This is a uh financing um to rehabilitate blighted areas. Um, so uh the R C W described blighted areas are, uh they considered them to be serious growing menace to public sa- health, safety, morals and welfare of the residents. Um, and its existence contributes substantially to the spread of disease, crime and depreciation of property values, constitute an economic and social liability and impairs or arrests sound growth, retards provision for housing accommodations, hinders job creation, economic growth and aggravates traffic problems. And so this um statute allows uh for the creation of a community renewal district um specifically for the redevelopment, which may include acquisition of the blighted area, demolition, construction of public in- infrastructure and making land available for development or redevelopment and making loans or grants for job creation or retention. And the this provision also provides for the power of eminent domain. Uh, another type or another purpose is for rehabilitation, which may include restoration um such as carrying out programs for voluntary or compulsory repair and rehabilitation. Um, this could be formed by either ordinance or resolution. Again, the appointed um board or lo- uh the governing body is either an appointed board or local body or other board. Um, they can assess uh levies or excise taxes. Um, they can issue bonds, um and they can also create local improvement districts. Example, I found one example and that's the city of Shoreline. In twenty thirteen, they created the Aurora where now known as the Shoreline Place, uh Community Renewal Area. The next one is a community facilities district. This is an independently governed special purpose district vested with the corporate authority um included under Article seven, section nine of the state constitution. It's the enabling statute is chapter thirty six point one four five. Um, and the purpose of this is to facilitate voluntary owner financing of community facilities and infrastructures. So the state found that the state's projected substantial growth, uh population growth in the next two decades will require new housing, uh places of employment, community facilities and supporting local subregional or regional infrastructure. And so the intent of this uh statute is to facilitate the voluntary landowner financing of community facilities and local subregional and regional infrastructure by authorizing the creation of the C F D or Community Facilities District while creating jobs and facilitating economic um development. This requires, however, a petition by one hundred percent of the owners of the private property located within the boundaries of the district, um followed by hearing from the legislative authority and approved by resolution. The governing body uh will be the Board of Supervisors. If it is within a single jurisdiction, it requires three members from the legislative authority of the jurisdiction plus two members appointed from the petitioners. If it is um within the county or um the city, it will require two members appointed from the county. Um, two members, excuse me, this is if it's a multi-agency. Uh, it requires two members appointed from the county, two members appointed from the city or the town, and then one uh appointed petitioner. Uh, the funding sources for the Community Facilities District is by special assessments. Um, and the special assessment um in this case would be calculated by the engineer. Um, and then they could also raise revenue bonds. Um, and the bonds assessment um is limited to the lesser of thirty-five years or the full term of any bondage. And they finance the uh the district costs, which may include um expenses uh for capital facility, including purchase, construction, lease, rehabilitation, improvement or inspection. It would go, it could also include the sanitary sewer uh systems or drainage flood control, uh water system. It could include pedestrian malls, parks, recreation facilities, landscaping, including um earthwork, structures, lakes and other water feature, plants, trees, irrigation, et cetera. Um, right now, there are, I, there, there's no, there's no district that exists for this one. It's pretty new. Uh, the next one that we have is the um Local Improvement District. Um compared to the other ones that we've talked about, this is a little bit different. It's more considered a financing tool um enabled by chapter thirty five point forty-three to thirty-five point fifty-six. Um, and it is again a means of financing capital improvements that will primarily benefit property owners within specific area. Um, and so the goal of the uh Local Improvement District is to present a bond portfolio to the investors that would entice them to invest at a low rate of return as possible. Um, and two is to assess the property owners as fairly as possible in relation to the special benefits that they will receive because of this improvement. And the formation of this is by resolution of intent from the legislative body or by petition from property owners. This, however, will uh require a feasibility study for the district. Um, that would be prepared by, of course, the civil engineers with the input from finance, from law and um land appraisals. An environmental um review may be required depending on the improvement. Um. And then for the governing body, this is overseen by the local government that um created it. It could be either the town, uh the city, the county or the dis- special district itself. Um, again, the funding is um the special benefit assessment that must, and it must not exceed the um special benefit cost of the improvement in that parcel. Um. They are also allowed to, um, excuse me, the the funding that's re- that's uh generated by this district is strictly uh to pay for the debt service, the bonds that um are issued. An example of this would be um the city of Tacoma. They have two um uh land improvement district. One is called L I D thirty-nine seventy and they used it to um their project was specifically for the wa- wastewater main extension north of Forty-Eighth Street from Lexington. And the other L I D that they have is L I D eighty-six sixty-seven, which is a permanent grade of the roadway surface along Ruby Street from Baltimore Street to Shirley Street and then Mullin Street from North Forty-Sixth Street to North Forty-Seventh. Um, the next district is a tax increment district. I think this is the last um last one. This is also a financing tool that governments can use to fund public infrastructure in a targeted area or areas to encourage private development and investment. This is enabled by statute, chapter thirty-nine point one one four. Um, this requires before the formation that a project analysis must be prepared by the local government and there are four findings that are required. The proposed public improvement expect, is expected to encourage private development and it should increase the assessed value within the inca- tax increment area. Second finding is that the private development would not be expected to occur solely through private investment within reasonable, within a reasonable foreseeable future without the proposed public improvement. Third finding is that the expected assessed value within the tax increment area without the proposed improvement would be less than the assessed value within the tax increment with the proposed area. And the fourth finding is that the anticipa- anticipated private development within the tax increment area is allowed under the permitting jurisdictions, zoning and debt standards. Once the project analysis has been done, then we can do the, you need to notify and negotiate if applicable with other taxing agencies because they're not going to get their share of the um property tax. Um, and there's, and then the um project analysis must be submitted for review to the state treasurer's office. Um, two public hearings or public briefings are required. Um, and then uh adoption of the, adoption of an ordinance, um creating the tax increment area. This district has two limitations. Uh, we can only do two tax increment within the jurisdiction boundaries and they cannot overlap. The assessed value at the time of the ordinance cannot be greater than two hundred million or twenty percent of the agency's total uh assessed value, whichever is less. And this district sunsets after twenty-five years. Um, the governing body is the uh or uh wh- whichever district created this tax increment district will be their um governing body. And then the taxes collected here uh only pays for the public improvement cost, administration cost incurred prior to the formation, including those only pays for the public improvement cost, administration cost incurred prior to the formation, including those incurred by county assessors, um, county treasurer, um, and a, and a, and it also pays for debt service. Um, for the so the, the way it's calculated, um, it will be the property tax increment. This would be the amount of uh property tax that would be generated would be equal to um a tax allocation rate times the assessed value new and assessed value base. So the assessed value base will be at the time of creation. And as you go through the years, that you will um get the incremental cost of the assessed value and then multiply that by the tax allocation rate. Now, the tax allocation rate is, for example, for the city of Mill Creek, our base for twenty-twenty-five, the average is eight point eight one six per thousand. Um, it excludes the state school levy, any local excise levies, any port district or PUD levies. So for, and for, for us, it'll just be, I believe, the state school and all of the um Everett School District. And so uh the, the rate that we're going to get is about two point eight, eight-two-two for assessed value. Um, examples of this, I have two. One is the city of Lindwood. Their project area, um, they submitted it uh last April twenty-twenty-five, and this is for the proposed uh sixty-seven point nine acres, um, including the city center that is boarded by Alderwood Mall Boulevard to the south and east.
It's the expansion of the convention center.
Yes, um, yes, and it pays for three project improvements of approximately sixty-six million dollars. Um, and then, of course, the city of Kirkland, uh, they have uh that for the Eighty-Fifth Street Station, and that's approximately fifty-eight million dollars. And there are three projects that are included in here, uh, the streets, roads, streetlights, and road improvements needed in that area. Parkland acquisition and development and water and sewer infrastructure improvements for the area. Um, that um concludes my report, and again, of the nine that we talked about, the uh Transportation um Benefit District is the one that in the near term uh would benefit the general fund indirectly. Um, and the other two districts that we talked about, which is the um uh uh Local Improvement District and the Tax Increment of Financing Districts. Those are options for when we start to do any development, but they're more into the five to seven year um outlook. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Questions? Can you take the screen down so we can see if John raises his hand?
Mayor, I'll make a, if you don't mind, I'll make a few comments, uh.
Okay.
We, we, we're after we-
A haunting picture of John.
I know, is he, he's here?
My laptop ran out of power, so now I'm working on my cellphone.
Of the nine, uh, special revenue districts, um, staff came down to about five, and Councilmember Paddock mentioned the fifth one that we kind of added the eleventh hour, which is the Metropolitan Parks District. Um, the others include the Community Facilities District, uh, the the TIF, Local Improvement District, as well as um the uh TBD. Um, Finance Director mentioned on, on the, some of the things to consider as, as we talk about these, and it's not something, it's good for you to know, at least now. We'll need these later on when we do make decisions as it relates to um the timing of the projects and whether um, when these types of financing would be appropriate to implement. Um, on one extreme, the TBD, of course, is, you're looking, you could go two or three months before you as short as two or three months to generate any revenue. Um, on the other spectrum, I think the tax incremental financing, just as it's mentioned, incremental takes longer, I think, over time to re- really the benefits of this, so it could be five to ten years, um, at least, uh, if not longer. The other one's probably twelve to twenty-four months, everything else in between. Um, some other things to consider is voter approval, some do and don't need voter approval. Um, uh, some, a few are councilmatic, uh, but that's just more FYI. Uh, revenue, um, they all generate different types of revenue, and there's different thresholds. I think mostly it falls above, falls above the five percent range, but um for example, a point seven-five percent of, of AV and is, is, I think applies to one or at least a few of those, but that's important to understand. Um, at times, TIFs can be used to bridge the gap and, and paired with other types of districts as well, so uh Mayor kind of mentioned it in another case, but you could probably um um, use multiple types of uh special revenue districts to fund projects. Um, community facility districts are probably the ones that apply to the South Town Center. Um, probably not so much the, the other one, which is the uh DRCC, probably doesn't apply to DRCC. Um, so TIFs and CFDs probably apply mainly to South Town Center and DRCC, I think. Um, I don't know, Finance Director may have something different on that. Um, the non-major projects, probably the local improvement districts, is I think is something we, we think that might be, that could be uh applied to. Um, and I think that's comments I had, Mayor, thanks.
Councilmember DK?
Sorry, I saw Laurel, um, I think wanted to follow up. Is it okay if I give her my time?
Yeah.
It would be really helpful if um for the Finance Director and the rest of the team, if council could provide guidance on what fees and taxes in districts you would like to get more information on, um, more thorough information. On April first, we talked about BNO taxes, utility taxes, um, gas taxes, lodging sales taxes, administration tax and gambling tax. And then along with the different districts, um, so like, for instance, if you could let us know, hey, we're interested in the car tabs for the Transportation Benefit District, utility taxes, a public facility district, tax increment districts. Um, if you could just give us a list of the things you really would like to hear more about, that would be helpful um for Amina and us to really dig in and get you the information you would need um to address the shortfall that we're going to be talking about in the um near future.
Do you want that direction tonight, or which, which do you need for doing the budget amendments this year, and which do you need for the budget next year?
If you could just let us know tonight which ones sound interesting that you would like more information on, we can get that ready. I know we were looking at, I think it was mid-October, um, bringing more information back. Was it early or mid-October?
Yes, so, so we are planning to go back to council to provide you with the revenue projections first. Um, but those revenue projections will not include um anything, uh, any new revenues unless we hear anything or more a specific direction from council on that. I know that uh in speaking with sa- with our colleagues from the uh Water District, that they need some lead time if you decide to do utility taxes. Uh, they require at least six months, uh, three to six months to get them up and running, so um, the earlier the better if we can uh council um decides to pursue any one of the items. We need about six to twelve months to get it started.
Thank you very much. This very helpful, um, obviously, this presentation. I don't know if I feel comfortable yet with like mm, based off of this and what I looked into to make recommendations, so I, I look at the rest of the council, and of course, your um, feedback and potentially even the um Finance Committee, if you guys have been looking at this information or anything like that in terms of, of it, because that seems like a really good place um, to have these like more in-depth conversations, and a recommendation from that Finance Committee to us might be helpful for me. I just wanted to share, um, once, you know, once this was first brought up, I, I wasn't familiar with any of this, and so I've been trying really to like get more information, even when I went to the AWC um, conference that I went to, I, one of the things I did is I, I definitely spoke to other cities and asked if they had one of these, to hear like more from them, what's going on. I heard a lot of feedback. I will say surprisingly, just from my own knowledge, as I like looked into it and found out, I was surprised that I couldn't find just a map that showed me of like Snohomish County of all where all of these special districts, you know, are and what they look like, and even as your presentation, you're talking about which ones you've seen. But it seems like such a resource that, that may be helpful, not something that our city of Mill Creek needs to put together, but it was just very surprising that, you know, I can, I can look up on Snohomish County, like a list of all like in terms of like school districts, housing, like there's just a list of it, but not something that shows us where and what and how it touches. And that's something that I think visually is helpful for me, not a course of action for anyone, but it's just like, I wonder if any, I, I bring this up because maybe someone on council, and it just came to me that I hadn't reached out, if someone's familiar with some type of visual of that way.
Okay, so if I may respond, so you're absolutely right. I don't think it exists right now because um doing a visual map would be very challenging.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just for the city of Mill Creek, we have already like three that I know within our district, right? And for instance, the school district, it encompasses us as well as other areas outside of Mill Creek. And then on top of that, you have to layer it. I think it's harder to see because it will, every, you'll see it being as a layers. It's not
Yeah.
It's not going to give you a definitive um visualization of each district or any type of district because it's just all layers.
Yeah, that, that's one of those things, I, like, I just thought of, not GIS, I don't think this is the appropriate tool. But I'm saying like there was something about like the layering, we were, you know, that one program that we said that we could look at so- sewers or whatever, and it seemed like, wow, this is a, an opportunity for the county to, to provide that information um to individuals. I just wanted to ask if anyone knew of anything, but yes, I agree, it seems like a, a difficult thing, but something this dense, I think that there's an opportunity for that, so thank you.
Could we have a motion to extend the regular meeting to nine o'clock, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The abstentions, I heard a six-oh vote. I'm not sure John was on. Uh, who is next? Councilmember, Councilmember Cavalry?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, as most of you know, I've been an advocate for taxing districts to solve a lot of our woes, especially some of our fiscal woes that were that were coming up on very quickly. Um, just some food for thought, would you be surprised to know that there are sixteen hundred and seventy separate tax, taxing districts in Washington State alone? So, and, and I say that because I don't want you to think it's, it's just some idea we're pulling out of thin air or a money grab or, or an opportunity to, you know, how, how to get more taxation on the public. It's more um about understanding the nuances of what we're facing, because every budget cycle we have, we see, we receive recommendations for either raising property taxes or um pondering the use of uh bank capacity or utility taxes, all of those um ideas come up, but one of the chief complaints um that I hear from residents is that those that pay the most in taxes, those with the most, that utilize the most resources pay the least in taxes. Um, so that's reason in utility taxes, it, it wouldn't be equitable enough, um, because the property owner would still bear the brunt, the single homeowner would bear the brunt of the majority of the tactation. It would effectively, essentially boomerang back onto the property owner, besides really, in my opinion, opening Pandora's Box, but to make it a little more complicated, we now have DRCC is in play and all the way uh down the track to the part, to the point where we are um having planners come out and draw us up schematics and see what that's going to look like. Now, the subarea is included, and we also have annexation in the mix, and I'm going to use um I'm going to use our speakers, be bold, be specific, be specific of what you want your city to look like. The legislature has afforded us a very wide array of, of of uses for utility, um, utili- I'm sorry, for for taxing districts for certain purposes, and, and we have several that fit the criteria and, and need, and, and the perfect storm exists at this point that, that we have three separate locations, in my opinion, two to three, where all would be applicable and all could be used, and I prefer them to be councilmatic at this point. This way, we can stop just simply going to the, to the property tax on the homeowner. And I would also note that this kind of mirrors, not like they're getting great publicity lately, South County Fire, their taxing, their tax benefit charge that they do for certain regions that utilize more resources. Um, I've identified um the northeast northern corner of Botley Everett Highway and One Thirty-second, that kind of triangle. And if we take that and run that down Botley Everett Highway towards One Sixty-fourth, extending that all the way down, we have now a, a natural buffer where we can start, and it stays within Mill Creek proper, so we don't in nee- need to include other districts or or other partners. We stay within the city. And so, um, these are, we talked about them, known as uh local improvement districts or, or Metropolitan Park districts, or the utilization of both. Um, what I'm proposing creates a funding mechanism, or what we're talking about now, um, that will just allow for a myriad of options for DRCC and our, and, and when we said think big and what we want our city to look like, to me and everything I've read, here's the answer. And, and, and when you think about what the, where the monies would go, it, it includes everything from infrastructure uh to roads, to sidewalks, to, to policing, to, to fire services, to anything within the district, so again, as we struggle to try to, to bridge that, that deficit gap that's coming, this is both, if nuanced correctly together, it bridges that gap for both of those. And um I know in twenty-twenty-three, the legislature even loosened up some of the, the uses for these taxing districts um, um, to make it a little more easier for the cities to use them, so. But one of the key components on a lot of these is that they, they all had an anchor, which is DRCC, like we, we were talking about, something to anchor around and build around to draw the investment, to bring it in, and, and they all contain the ones that we're thinking about, uh, a, a mixed-use development component within it, so. There's a lot more I have to speak on this and a lot of examples that we can go over, um. I, I think this is, is, this is the solution to a lot of our problems without having to simply impose a massive tax increase on the property owners, that we make it specific, and we cut once instead of cutting three or four times, three or four years in a row. So, I'm happy to talk further about it. I think, I think this makes a lot of sense, given the complexities of everything we're doing with DRCC, with subarea, and with potential annexation. They all, they all fit within the scope and can be done in a relatively short timeframe. Thank you.
Councilwoman Allison?
Thanks, Mayor. So, um, I don't remember what the date was when you gave us a bunch of information before, but I've been carrying it around in my bag ever since you gave it to us. And, um, you know, we, we don't have any utility taxes coming into the city compared to all the other cities around. We're the only ones that don't do it. We also don't have a Transportation Benefit District, so we don't collect any vehicle licensing fees. We're the only one around, right? Granite Falls, Mount Lake Terrace, Edmonds, Kenmore, Everett. Everyone else is collecting those fees. I would like to know I, I would like to have a general comparison. What, if we, if we did what the median other cities do, what would that generate? Just for a comparison, not that I'm saying we, we need to implement every utility tax, but, you know, what, what would that look like? We're the only ones not doing it.
Are, um, are you looking at the?
I'm looking at something. I don't have a date. It was an attachment B from a long time ago.
Very bottom of that, I have for the, just specifically for utility taxes, I have um an estimated amount based off of if we assess six percent across the board for taxes using the lowest out of all the um ten surrounding cities, the lowest. Using the lowest out of all the um ten surrounding cities, the lowest um per capita. Utility taxes seventy-three dollars and the highest is a hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay.
But that doesn't, that doesn't tell us what it'd be imposed upon. I think what you're getting at is what would it be if we put it on the surface water? What if we put it on phone bills or sewer and water bills? I think that's the more accurate number that we.
Yeah.
Get.
Yes, broken down and applied, I guess.
The, uh, the, the, the challenge with doing all of the utility taxes is we don't have data because you're charging it on the gross revenue. That's, that's generated by that utility district and we don't have that. But we have though um is data from Alderwood Water District and we just extrapolated based off of what their. Gross uh revenue. For the last three years, so we did an average and I believe based off of a one percent to a six percent um. Rate, it's about a hundred and fifty-five to about nine hundred and thirty-two a year. Between a one percent to a six percent just on water and sewer. And that's for um the whole population.
So I would be, out of all of those, I would be interested in the stormwater utility tax. We, we manage a stormwater system here and we aren't. We don't have that utility tax going on. That just makes sense to me. I'm interested in that licensing vehicle tax, but that means I'm interested in the transportation bene- benefits district. So maybe not all of them, but the ones that make sense for us, I guess, a, a utility.
Um, would it be, uh, would it be if, if council is open when we start to talk about the revenues in October? We'll give you a baseline without any new revenue and then one of the scenarios would be. Um, adding the utility taxes as you've mentioned and then adding another layer for um. That EBD. If um council is open, we could factor that into our assumptions.
Well, I think we see, need to see some more numbers and have.
Yeah.
About what it would apply to.
Develop the assumptions.
So we're not sure, I don't think the council is prepared to say do it six percent on all utilities, because we don't know what a burden, kind of burden that would be on the. The users, the residents.
So, so again, our challenge is getting the gross revenues of the other utility, the only ones that we know of now. Is the ones for water uh and sewer. Um. It, it's hard, it's hard to. Figure out the other ones for like um electricity and gas, but we could reach out to uh.
Let's see, let's reach out to a few other cities and see if they've got, been able to get that information. If not, we might just have to make some assumptions.
Yeah.
Yep.
I guess I would just be interested in seeing as much of it as you could collect, you know, I. I can't equate what that would mean to the average person without. Or, or the benefit outweighs the pain.
Right.
Mayor Protem.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um. I think um regarding the utility taxes, yeah, I think we, we need more information. I think there's also different discussions to be had. Because we get, you can pick and choose where you would place the utility taxes. And um, you know, I don't know, um, I'm not sure it was like cell phones on there. Is that one of the ones? Because I think, you know, to Councilmember Cavalry's point too, I'd be interested in like. What, what would it look like if we, and I don't know how you would even get that data though for cell phones, because. Everybody uses a cell phone, for instance, like if you put it on water. Are the people in our apartments here paying water, that water bill, or does that also just go on to the homeowners to make? So I think I have multiple questions on some of those things. So I think I need a little bit more um. In, information in order to, to really look at that and, and decide that. So I think that's um. But that doesn't answer your question to bring back more, more um information. Um, I do think with the um. The discussions we've already had about the transportation benefit district and the fact that. We are going to need to spend so much money on our roads in the coming years. That are going to need to be taken care of, that that would make sense for us to take a look at that one. Um. Regarding um. All the ones we went over tonight, like. This is a lot of information and it's a lot to take in, I think. So um. Off the top of my head, I have. A few questions, because if I'm looking at some of these right. Aren't they funding off the AV? So the property taxes are still gonna, your property taxes are still gonna go up?
In the district.
Okay, so um, that was a question. And then um. What I'm curious about. Is who's in control? Because then are we giving up control of our parks or whatever? And then I think that's a discussion that we. If we're going to look at some of those things, we need to have an honest discussion on how do we feel about that? How do we feel like we're comfortable giving up um? The authority to have a full say so over our parks? Like, what does that look like? Um, so I've got those questions and out of those, I'm not sure which ones. Exactly, sorry, it was a lot of information. Which ones make the most sense for us to look at that would actually. Work for what we might want to do, because what would work for, would it be the um, the metropolitan? Um, Parks District for, to look at for the parks? Would it be the one that was the recreation? Um, to look at for DRCC? Um, those type of questions. And then for me, I think um. The South Town Center, what, what would you look at for that? So I think I need a little bit more information on. Those areas and it was, it's a lot of information all at once on each one, so it's hard for me to fully unpack um. What each one fully entails for us. So. Hopefully that helps with your feedback.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the other piece of information, you know, if. The taxing district or the utility tax, where can that be used? If it isn't general fund, you know, where, where can it be, where can those revenues be applied?
Well, that, that's what we got to get straight off the board, because I mean, I agree we need to use these, but. With all due respect to the comment, the taxing districts solve our financial woes, they don't. The only tax that will solve our fi- financial woes, which is a general fund problem, is a utility tax. All these other taxing districts have dedicated uses that those fees go to and we're not proposing to fund those out of the general fund. So these don't solve our financial woes. As someone just pointed out, all these, the main funding mechanisms for all these districts are bonds and levies. Bonds and levies are paid by the property owners. And I don't see why we would transfer our parks to Metropolitan Park District unless we made the boundaries bigger than the city. Which in some respects makes sense, but I don't think the county is going to support us. Taxing the unincorporated area for parks when they're collecting taxes for their park system, because they'll turn around and try to find a way to tax us. I share Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem's comment. I, I would flip the comment. In my mind, we need to look at the utility tax. I don't know what the appropriate rate is, but I think for the general fund, that has to be considered. I agree, we need to look at a transportation benefit district for a councilmatic increase, somewhere up to fifty bucks. I don't know what level is appropriate. When it comes to DRCC, do we need a taxing district? Yes. Which one? I don't know. I think we need a recommendation from you guys, which one makes most sense? We'll be here till four o'clock in the morning trying to get an opinion from the seven of us of which one of these districts makes sense. So. I would say, yes, we need to find a transport or a district that would work for DRCC. I don't know which one it is. The same for the, the sub area. Yes, we need to find if there's one of those that works, because I think there's one that, one or two that could. I'm not sure tonight I'm going to be, be able to figure out which one that might be. And the answer would be for other projects, yes. I, I just not able to say what other projects might make sense. So, but. I think it's important that we all get on the same page. When it comes to our financial woes, if we're in agreement, our financial woes is the general fund. Only the utility tax would be a direct benefit to solving that financial well. Councilmember Paddock.
Uh, Assistant City Manager, you, it sounded like you had a list. Of additional options. There was utility, you mentioned BNO. Are there other ones on the list that you could just share with us again? Because at least for me, I, I forgot about the BNO, so I didn't even get that part.
Yeah, um, so on four one, Armina gave everyone a table. If anyone is wanting to look this up, um, it's the BNO taxes, the first one. Utility taxes, brokered natural gas use tax. Regulatory business license fees. The lodging sales tax, admission tax and gambling tax. And there's one more. And then the transportation benefit district for the vehicle license fees.
Okay. Hopeful, thank you.
Yeah, and I don't think we were expecting everyone to know exactly. It was mainly, we were trying to figure out. What maybe we should bring back and it sounds like we'll do some research behind the scenes and find. What districts would be most beneficial and maybe we can work with the finance team.
The one other bit of information we need is the fee study, because there's, that is the other area that would affect the general fund, because there's a lot of revenue we're not collecting and we don't know how much that is yet. So. That's another gap that the fee study will plug. I, I just don't know if that's a small number or a significant number yet.
Um.
Our Martin was.
We, we should have the fee study information here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, great.
I'll just make a few comments, Mayor, if I may. The intent of this study session was to focus on special revenue districts. Uh, the utility discussions were planned to come, we were bringing that for beginning of October, I believe, the seventh. Uh, at that time, we were going to address a number of different areas of utility taxes. I think that's what Councilmember Paddock was asking. Uh. Sewers, stormwater, uh, cellular, electricity. And.
I don't think cellular is allowed.
Maybe not.
I think it's telephone.
But there were, there were a handful of areas that we were planning on bringing possibly rough numbers back. So you had a sense of kind of what we're dealing with. Now, of course, you don't have the other side of it, what we're funding. And um, but at this time, we just wanted some general direction on what you want us to come back and research on. Um, not to specifically identify which districts would address which projects or anything. So. Hopefully that helps a little bit, kind of clear it up. Um. So utility discussions will come back another time. That's going to take a whole. One hour and a half, probably, at least. Um, so.
It sounded like the utility, transportation. Uh, tax incremental district. I don't know if there really is appetite on the municipal park or not, but. Those three sounded like some version of that was brought up by at least two or three, if not four.
I'd need to understand what the benefit of municipal park, what, what would it be for? I mean, if it's for DRCC, that's one thing, but I'm, for generally for parks, I guess I'd need to understand what would be the benefit of. Taxing our residents through a different taxing district than the city.
Well.
But you're taxing them for the same thing. You're shifting it from the city to a metropolitan parks district, unless, unless you're changing.
But they're the direct benefactors, right? It's, it's their properties that are going to increase. They're going to have the anchor there. Um, it's also the area that utilizes the majority of.
Which area are you talking about?
Um, um, Both Levert Highway area down that, that, that triangle, one thirty second Both Levert Highway.
Well, I guess I'm confused.
Past DRCC.
We're talking about parks.
It is, but I mean, we are putting, talking about putting park space in there along with an anchor building and, and. In DRCC, right?
I think that's getting into the weeds of which district. I think the direction I'm hearing is we want to see if a district would work for DRCC. We're just not sure which one.
Right, and, and the point I was making is that if it's Metropolitan Park District, according to their def- definition, I'm not saying that's the one we're going to use, but, but it allows for both. It allows for both. It allows for future expansion. Um, you even brought the conversation up earlier, not earlier, but on prior meeting about potentially moving City Hall up there. Um, all of those things become um opportunity at that point, if there's a fun, funding mechanism in place. And again, um, the, the people that benefit the most are the people in that region.
No, and maybe this is a discussion for another night. I don't think we're all talking the same thing of what we think would be included in a park district, because I, what I heard Councilmember Paddock say was transferring our parks. To park district and what I'm hearing you say is a funding mechanism for DRCC.
I, I, I just was thinking out loud.
I know, I, I under, I understand, but.
Yeah.
But.
So it, like I said, it doesn't sound like there was much interest in that one in the first place. I think the three that sound interesting to, to council and. If I'm wrong, please tell me, utility. Tax incremental district, transportation benefit.
And something that would work for DRCC. Whatever that, whether.
Yeah, whatever that is.
Whatever it's.
DRCC, hope.
Or whatever, whatever it is, we.
Um. I, I don't know what we would need to look at, but I would be interested in seeing um for the future too. If looking at one of these for the Penny Creek Nature Preserve area might would be a good idea, since we are talking about. And that's going to be discussions coming up to us in the future on how we would take that over and if we should take it over.
And, and just maybe some additional food for thought. The, the Metropolitan Park District um requires. It, it's councilmatic for the most part, so um. And it's probably the most broadly used. It's about the way I'll, I'll finish that.
I'm, I wasn't ruling it out. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page of what it would be used for. If it's DRCC, I agree, let's look at it. Agree. John, are you silent? No, did you want, I'm not sure if he's still there. His phone's there. A, any other questions, comments you guys, do you think you have, uh, City Manager?
There's one more comment. I think, you know, at some point in time, we, we will be hiring a professional to. Assist us in actually making those decisions on how to. Apply some of these as well. That's, so we may not want to get too far into this. Um. We can probably at least identify some of the options, but it may be get, you know, it's a complicated. It can be complicated because there's interplay between the South Town Center and the DRCC as well. And so there may be, and then other things that we may be talking about as it relates to. Um, having some. Uh, control over uh. The future of the city. So. We may need to resort to. That last piece of having a professional advisor on. Those financing options. So we can only get so far is what I'm thinking.
I think the next step with DRCC is mainly to look at the uses of, with the option one that we approved a few weeks ago. And the uses that we're contemplating, are there any that would be precluded under any of these districts? So for instance, would any of them allow us to do the community facility but not a city hall? Or do one or the other? I think that would be the next step to see if they, with what the direction we've come up with so far with that option one. Does it rule out any of the districts? Or does, so that might be the next step with that. Sean, any final comments? You good?
Final, no.
Okay. We beat that one?
Yeah.
For the, for tonight? Yeah, thank you.
A year and a half in the, year and a half in the making, it was worth having.
Lot of detail. It's, it's complicated and we only touched on what, ten of the eighty? The next study session will be a bear. Um, uh, it could, brings us to our consent agenda. Item L, approval checks number six nine one six three. Through six nine three zero one and ACH wire transfers in the amount of five hundred fifty-nine thousand. Two hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Audit committee was Councilmembers Cavalry and Duque. Any exceptions?
No exceptions.
No exception.
And item M, payroll and benefit ACH payments in the amount of three hundred two thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and fifteen cents. Any exceptions?
No exceptions.
No exceptions.
And item N, the city council meeting minutes of July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five and August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? I believe that was a six oh vote. I'm not sure. Councilmember Steckler is still with us. Uh, report, City Manager.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, first report, uh, just more of a reminder, an email went out, I believe, today or yesterday regarding um. Asking council to provide us with if there are any times um that you will be not able to attend council. Uh, in the coming months, um, I think we intend to get.
Uh, in the coming months, um, I think we intend to get final budget. Mid by um items completed by, I think, the twenty fifth of November, so pretty robust. Scheduling over the next few months and not much room to make any adjustments on the staffing side, just given the time it takes to handle some. And for each agenda item on the schedule, so um. If you do, if you are out, just let us know. We'll we'll see if we can try to accommodate uh your time so that you are here when. Uh, we do make some of those big decisions. Um, the second re-. Report is, she's gonna update on um. Panhandling in the city of Mill Creek.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, good evening again, Mayor, Mayor of the council. We are aware of some uh comments that are being made and to council regarding individuals who are panhandling within the city. Uh, I just wanted to make it um a little bit more, it is, it is more of a. Uh, it's very difficult at times to work through those contacts. Um, we are doing the best we can referring these individuals to services. Um, they do have a constitutional right to be on the street corner. They do have a constitutional right to have signs. They do have a constitutional right to panhandle. Um, we do issue, address that on private property through other means of uh trespassing. If the property owners don't want those individuals present. But when they're on public property, it makes it a a little bit more difficult to uh address. Um, that being said, we do have some mechanisms in place. Um, but we're working through those things to address issues with individuals that might be within the public right of way on a sidewalk. Or things or areas of that nature, so just wanna make sure that everybody's aware that we are working through those problems and and doing the best we can to address them.
Any other staff reports?
One more, Mayor. I forgot to mention that regarding the uh busy next few months, we are planning. If council's available, uh, a special session on the twenty first of October, so that's, if you please consider that. Day as an additional meeting in October, if.
The twenty fifth is a Saturday.
Twenty first, sorry. If I said twenty fifth, I meant twenty first.
Okay, so if you could let City Clerk know your availability sooner rather than later, that'd be great.
No other reports, Mayor.
Well, let's have a motion to extend the regular meeting to nine ten, so no one feels rushed on their reports.
Move to extend to nine ten?
Second.
Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes six zero. Uh, uh, just a few items to report. One, we'll take a couple of minutes. Um, update on South County Fire. Uh, we had a. The staff requested to meet with um myself, Mayor Protam and Councilmember Paddock. To start going over the data that they were using. Um, so we had a good meeting. Uh, on Monday, we spent, gosh, better part of an hour and fifteen minutes, I think, with them going over it. It was Chief Eastman, Assistant Chief Maxwell, Assistant Chief Isatola, Todd Anderson, who I assume is another Assistant Chief, but I'm not positive. And then Jennifer Pardee, who's their strategic data analyst. Um. You know, again, uh, they were very sincere in their apologies. They recognized that they did not handle this situation correctly. I think they had the best interests of the city at heart, but they did not go about this correctly. Um, and that was very, very clear. I don't wanna dive into the weeds. I think they were gonna prove, have they sent us their slide deck yet?
Yes, they sent it to us this afternoon.
Did we, okay, so we'll.
Also, or uh, yes.
So we'll circulate that so that everyone can see it. I don't wanna get into the weeds of that um. Uh, tonight. Um, but I think we ended the meeting confirming that, you know, I wanted to make sure that. They weren't there to convince us why they're gonna try to go back to three person staffing. They said, no, they're gonna stick with the commitment that the commissioners approved, the direction they gave for the five person staffing with a medic there. And see what the data shows. Um. Uh. You know, we discussed a bit, the problem they have is the perception versus the reality. I think they think the reality is. They can provide equivalent service to Mill Creek with a different. Staffing mechanism than what was promised to the voters. You know, the I'm not sure we have seen the other side of the story. I'm interested to hear the unions take, cause I know. From some discussions, they have a slightly different viewpoint on how they're approaching it, so it was good to get um. Uh, the staff's approaching again. I think it was a productive meeting. Um. And I will point out, I'm glad the Mayor Protam brought up at the end. This isn't really an issue for the staff. It's not their problem, but. That the comments made by two of the commissioners aren't necessarily helping mend the wounds. That this little escapade over the last six weeks caused, but. Um, I think it was a positive step forward. We'll get that information out to you and we've. Just as we talked with the Intergovernmental Relations Committee about having more regular meetings at the elected level. Um, we also encourage them to. You know, we get regular updates from the chief on the police statistics and we need to have them come in. More regularly with staff, maybe on a quarterly basis, and then on maybe on a semi annual basis. With you guys uh to go over the numbers and what the data is showing, so. We have an open line of communication. We don't get surprised again and uh the staff was very open to that, so. Despite all that happened in the last six weeks, I thought it was a very positive um positive meeting. Uh, two other things, had a mayor's lunch last week uh with uh Chris, Mayor Frisell from Lynwood, uh, Kioko from Mount Lake Terrace. Dale from Breyer, uh. Mike from Edmonds and myself. We talked about a lot of things, flock cameras. Um, I think everyone's very supportive of them. It's become a political hot potato in Mount Lake Terrace. With everything going on at the fire, at the federal level and the concerns over privacy with them, but I've not heard. Any privacy concerns expressed by the cities that have implemented the flock cameras. Um, they've been a big, they. Cities always are giving examples of how it's worked, how it's worked well. Um. I think all the cities that were represented there share their. Concerns over the electeds at South County Fire and the challenges that they present, so we're not alone. Um, and we talked again about e-motocycles a lot. That's a problem, not just in Mill Creek. It is a problem in all these cities. And so I think we'll end up, the Legislative Committee next year is gonna be talking with April and Senator Lovick and. Representative Donahue about what can be done at the state level. And then the last point was the TBDs, all of them I think are doing it. I'm not sure if Breyer is, they may be an exception. But they're all doing it, I believe, councilmatically. I don't think, have any of them done it with the sales tax? To to. Yeah, no, I don't think any of them have taken it to the voters. They've all stuck with the councilmatic. Um, and then the last item, I just got this tonight, is kind of timely. With all the discussion on e-motocycles and teenagers, I got this letter from the District Court of the Snoomish County. Uh, inviting me to participate in the kickoff of their youth traffic court, and I'll just quickly read two quick paragraphs. Of what this, this is authorized by the legislature about uh ten years ago. And it says, youth traffic court is designed for teen drivers and it is run by teens under the supervision of the court. Eligible cases will be minor traffic infractions filed with into the Snoomish County District Court. Instead of appearing before a judge, participating teens will appear before a panel of their peers who serve as the judges, jurors and advocates. Program is authorized under RCW three point seven two, which allows youth courts to provide an alternate response to traffic infractions. The purpose is clear, to make our roadways safer by reaching young drivers while they are impressionable and helping them. Form reasonable driving habits. By creating accountability among peers. We expect to reduce repeat infractions and build safer roads for everyone. At the same time. Youth volunteers develop leadership, civic responsibility and understanding of the justice system. So I'm gonna try to attend to mean rearranging our weekly mayor's meeting on on the twenty fifth, cause this is from four to five in Everett, but I think it'd be worthwhile to. Attend, so I thought it was interesting and timely that this came in with all the discussion of e-motocycles is, let's. Let's see if we can get the teens to police themselves. So that was my report for this evening. Mayor Protam?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, as the mayor said, we did speak with um South County Fire. I think he um laid out that discussion pretty well. Um, I I will just add on here that we left that meeting with um. A request to them, they said that they would honor to get back with us on the data. Every three months to have a meeting like we just had so that we could compare um. And see if what they think is gonna happen with their data is actually gonna pan out. Uh, so we wanted to have a touch point on a regular basis to be able to look at that data and see if we. Are having lag time here and if it's really doing what they think it's going to, or if it's doing what we think it'll do. So um, looking forward to having those discussions with them on a three month basis. So that we can report back to our residents to let them know what's happening. Um. Also, um, yeah, we did have such a great meeting with um with the staff, with the um. And I think their heart really is in the right place that they're really. They really are trying to do what they think is the best thing for the city. We just need to to work through this. Um, that said, I know my. I'm getting lots of phone calls and people stopping by my house. Um, from residents that are really upset with how the commissioners are talking to them and are treating them and that um. That is a concern, so um. And as the mayor said, I I did point that out to them as well. Um, also, um, as I mentioned earlier tonight, I had the the SET Exploratory Committee meeting today. We really ended up spending the huge chunk of the meeting on housing. Um, it kind of took over the whole meeting. And um. If they send me, I think they're gonna send us all the slide deck that we discussed. It really, we really dove into like all the different funding for housing. Um, and where does it come from? And so I'll send that out to you guys as um, and we're still working through. Um, our recommendations that we're gonna be bringing to the executive. Wait a minute, no, the steering committee, we have too many different SET committees, the steering committee. Um, in October and then to bring to everyone to discuss and make and. Add recommendations in um. January, I think is when the um annual meeting will be. Um, also, I had a great um tour of the Penny Creek Nature Preserve. The group that has formed had is has invited everyone out, um, all the council members, I believe, and everyone is running um. For office this time, and so I um end up being in the time slot this um weekend and Councilmember Duque was there too. It was really. Nice to be able to go and and walk through and have them show all the beautiful area and and see all the animals and just the diverse. Um. Ecosystem that is there, and so that was really nice. Um, and I really appreciate them taking us through there and showing us. Showing us that area. Um. You already addressed the guy that's on the corner sitting. Um. And um, I also wanna bring, I think we also got an email here, but I heard um also. This week that um residents are not happy with the way the, still not happy with the paving in the Highlands and um Shadow Park, I think. You may be aware of that, but I just wanted to say to flag they're still. Concerned with that, so um, that's all I got.
Councilor Cavalieri?
Thanks, Mayor. Um. Don't wanna beat a dead horse here though, but I'm very proud of of every council member and every staff member, all of us that. That when we found out our. Fire team was being reduced by forty percent, we we acted. We we wrote articles, we sent emails, we contacted cl- our our sources, our friends, our utilized our connections. To um apply pressure. We asked citizens to get involved. They did. And and a couple of weeks later, here we are, so I'm I'm not saying that to. To gloat or to take a victory lap. I'm saying that because. Um, that's what the elected body is supposed to do and 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 again, I I think it's, it was a testament. I I watched. While I was gone, I watched the mayor's testimony on vacation and uh I thought you did a fantastic job. Um, putting those bullets out there and and making sure everybody understood where the entire council and its residents stood. And so um, I think it's worth noting uh tha- tha- that that is the role of the elected body, so here we are. I would also say that um when it comes to uh quarterly meetings and reviewing data provided to us by. By any agency, I would, if we're going to go down that path, I'd like to have an independent analyst or one of the union representatives. Review the data as well because you you only get the data that you're given. Uh, always remember that, and New World is very analytical. There's only a few people that can um really extrapolate uh the kind of data that you're asking for, so. Um, be cautious what you ask for. I'd say, let's just make sure we keep our five guys. Um. And second, um, as um many of you know, my my father had a pretty massive stroke uh last week and um. He's lost some vision, but he is stable. Uh, I wanna thank each and every one of you for all the um, I'm gonna cry up here. All the tremendous outreach, all the um uh contacting my family and um. Text messages and cards and uh. Don't don't think I don't appreciate that. Thank, thank you, everyone, and thank you for the prayers.
Can we again extend the meeting by ten minutes to nine twenty, just so no one feels rushed?
Move to extend to nine twenty.
Second.
Alls in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Steckler had to drop off the meeting due to cell phone coverage. Uh, Councilmember Allison?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I I just wanna say that I appreciate everything that the staff is doing, you know, we've had. People calling us about the food vendors in the parking lots. We've had people calling us about the panhandling. The e-bikes, the e-motocycles. South County Fire issues, you know, just the list just keeps going on. It seems like this has been the busiest time for just little issues that won't go away, so I. Just wanna say I appreciate everybody, the elected's um efforts too on the South County Fire um situation, you know, we. We did stick together and um that seems to be in a better spot than it was a few weeks ago, so. Uh, no other reports, just to thank you.
Councilmember Duque?
No report.
Councilmember Paddock?
Uh, just a couple of additions. So clarification, the the South County Fire data came to the three of us and it also came to city staff, so they should be able to distribute that when it uh. Um, it, I think it just came in like a couple hours before we started the meeting. Um, as well as a a um and ask for dates where we can get back together with them to look at actuals versus the baseline. In uh December, so they they've they've really not just shown up, but they've. They've committed to show up again, which I think is, again, really great, uh, what Councilmember Cavalieri was saying. Um, the only other thing and just a couple of things that came up, one uh in the meeting was one, I was kind of hit by the. Juxtaposition of the folks that came in and talked about what they're living through. And then we had the garden awards. And I just thought, wow, these are, these are individuals that are having a very, very different experience in the city of Mill Creek. Right? And obviously, this this, eh eh everyone except maybe the guy that lives next to him would would think that something's gotta be done. So I won't, I I don't need to grandstand about that. I would ask, though. If there's either a city report or even a mayor or Mayor Protam report each week. On how it's going. Like if we show up for them like that, I think they'll feel heard, and I don't know what the right venue is, so please, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but. Whether it's staff or it's council, and I would think you guys are the folks that get together every week, right? In your secret squirrel meeting, there might be a way to to do something like that, so. Do do what y'all wanna do, no commitments here, just something that I think would say a lot to those folks that came here. Um, and then I guess while I'm asking, uh. We 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 did have a a couple of conversations about um. About what to do about helping these kids and their families understand. The liabilities and whatnot around these e-bikes and whatnot, and I and I wonder if there's an opportunity for the SROs. To provide some of that data while they're doing their outreach within the schools. I don't know if that's the right thing to do or not, and maybe I should have just asked you one on one, but since I've got another seven minutes, I thought let's.
You don't.
See if that's a.
Public ass.
So, in any event, another idea at the end of the meeting that, think about. That's it.
Thank you. Items communication. No, and I'm not seeing any members of the public online. We do not have an executive session on the agenda tonight, so if nothing further on the agenda, at nine ten, I will adjourn the meeting.